Good evening, I call the work session of the May 25th meeting to order. Would everybody please join me?
Should I also do an invocation for the work session?
No, no. Get this thing off.
All right, we're doing it right.
All right, is Mark on?
No, Mark is not going to be on for the work session.
All right.
And Terry?
Is Terry on?
He's, no sir. He's not joined us yet.
All right, so I have neither. Therefore, I will take a consideration of work session and regular meeting agendas.
Mayor Claffey, I move to amend the regular meeting agenda to add item F, consideration of real estate acquisition for the Stanton Juvenile and Domestic Relations Court.
Very good, we have an amendment to the regular meeting. Other than that, do we have a motion to approve the minutes for the rest of them?
We need a, Mayor Claffey, we need a second and to vote on the amendment first.
All right.
I'll, I'll second.
Counselor Woods is second. Mr. Kessler.
Ms. Woods?
Aye.
Ms. Edwards?
Aye.
Mr. Arrowood?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Darby?
Aye.
Mayor Claffey?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
All right, now that we have an amendment, now we will consider the regular meeting and work session agendas.
Mr. Mayor, I, excuse me, I moved to approve the work session agenda and the regular meeting agenda as present, as amended, pardon me.
Thank you, there's a motion, is there a second?
Mayor Claffey has a second.
You? Mr. Kessler.
Ms. Edwards?
Aye.
Mr. Arrowood?
Aye.
Ms. Woods?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Darby?
Aye.
Mayor Claffey?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, and right on time at 5:04, we are now ready for the 5:05 item on the agenda, all this. And that will be the presentation of the quarterly financial report. Ms. Bogart?
Ms. Moyers, our CFO, will present the report this evening.
Good evening. So the quarterly update was in your packet. I'm going to hit some of the highlights. Starting with sales tax, we have nine months worth of data. We're running about a little over $400,000 above those same nine months last fiscal year. So if this trend continues, we'll end the fiscal year about $700,000 over our projected budget for sales tax revenue. We did see a slight dip in March, but hopefully that is just an isolated event for March and not something that will continue. And on average, it's about 10% higher than what it was last fiscal year. We have meals tax data through March as well. The first three quarters combined are about $411,000. That's about 10% higher, just like sales tax. And if we continue this trend, we'll end the year about $1 million over budget, which is pretty good considering we raised the budget for 23 by 25%, and we're still going to exceed that. Lodging tax, it's trending about 10% higher than the last fiscal year. And we have the potential to exceed budget by 400,000. In addition, personal property is expected to exceed budget by $1.2 million due to the increased values of cars. And on the expenditure side, we're about 71% expended, which is slightly under the 75%. We should be nine months to the fiscal year. Although this measure is not always dependable because not all expenses are recorded evenly throughout the fiscal year. For example, our largest expense, which is schools, we do half in December and half in June, so you can't always go by that particular measure. Um, and the only thing I wanted to pull out to your attention on the expenditure side, as if you remember last time, I mentioned the workers' comp and the tail claims from when we were self-insured, and they had come in like 200,000. Those are up to 260,000 now. But the really good news is that we do have reinsurance cover, the company called Swiss Re, and we received a check for $275,000 to cover those claims. The check is higher because I believe some of it relates to claims from a prior fiscal year. So that is excellent news for us. We have approximately like $700,000, I think, in labor savings if things continue through the fiscal year, like I expect them to. A lot of that's coming from streets, park maintenance, city manager's office, finance, and communications, to name a few. Still no word from VDEM on whether we're going to get help with the July storm cleanup. But as you know, that we did budget for that out of our carryover funds. And so the takeaway that I want you to go away with this evening is that things are trending positively. And we're in a good position to have some carryover, which we're going to need for the CIP and the JDR courts. And that's all I have. If you have anything in particular that you have a question on as you read through the report, you can ask now or email me later.
So, Ms. Moyer, did you say a million over projected budget on meal sex?
Yes.
And on the sales tax, how much was that?
Sales, it's probably like 700,000. And lodging is probably 400.
And that's projected over the budget, the 2023 budget?
And as you know, real estate will come in higher too, based on budget or compared to budget, because that budget was built on the lower assessments. And so there's going to be, I think, a little over $3 million from real estate. Yep.
Additional questions from council?
No.
No, ma'am. Thank you, Jesse.
Sid, thank you very much. Hi, we're now up to a closed meeting. Anybody? Motion ready?
I'll do it.
Go for it.
Mr. Mayor, I move to enter a closed meeting for consultation with legal counsel for necessary legal-related advice and discussion regarding the ordered show cause in Stanton Circuit Court case CL 21-500 concerning the Stanton Juvenile and Domestic Relations District Court Facility located in the District Courts Building at 6 East Johnson Street, Stanton, pursuant to Virginia Code 2.2-3711A7 and 2.2-3711A8, and discussion or consideration of the acquisition of real estate property located within the city limits of Stanton, Virginia for use as a court facility where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body pursuant to Virginia Code 2.2-3711A3.
Thank you, I understand the reluctance to.
Can you hear me clearly? Do you want me to?
Yeah, would you repeat?
Yeah.
A motion has been made, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you very much. Mr. Kessler.
Ms. Woods?
Aye.
Ms. Edwards?
Aye.
Mr. Arrowood?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Darby?
Aye.
Mayor Claffey?
Aye.
Motion carries.
We are in closed session.
Hello?
On May 25th, 2023, I received a request from Counselor Holmes to participate remotely in the May 25th Stanton City Council meeting due to a temporary medical condition that prevents his physical attendance at the meeting. I will now entertain a motion to allow Counselor Holmes remote participation in this meeting pursuant to Stanton City Council Procedure Memorandum Number Three.
Mayor Claffey, pursuant to Stanton City Council Procedure Memorandum Number Three, I move to allow Counselor Holmes to remotely participate in the May 25th, 2023 Stanton City Council meeting due to a temporary medical condition.
Second that.
Motion has been made and second, Mr. Kessler, please call there.
Ms. Woods?
Aye.
Mr. Arrowood?
Aye.
Ms. Edwards?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Darby?
Aye.
Mayor Claffey?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Counselor Holmes, can you state the remote location you're participating from?
Yes, 111 Waverly Green, Stanton, Virginia.
Everyone, can you hear Counselor Holmes?
Yes, yes, yes.
We will now go into closed session. Good evening, it's 7 o'clock. I'd like to call the May 25th meeting to order. We have to come out of a closed session first.
Mayor Claffey, I move that council reconvene in an open meeting and certify to the best of each member's knowledge that only lawfully exempted public business matters were discussed, and that only public business matters as identified in the closed meeting motion were heard discussed or considered in the meeting.
Motion has been made, is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Kessler.
Ms. Woods?
Aye.
Ms. Edwards?
Aye.
Mr. Arrowood?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Darby?
Aye.
Mayor Claffey?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Is Mr. Holmes on?
Not yet, no sir.
And Mr. Holmes was in on the closed meeting in the back, so we have to get him on this screen. In the meantime, if you all would join me for the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, our invocation moment of silence will be brought to us by Counselor Edwards.
Sir. Friends, I'm going to open with a nondenominational prayer. If you'd like to join. Creator God, we give you thanks for the many blessings we experience here in our wonderful city of Stanton, and we offer gratitude for all the people in the room this evening. We pray that even though we have different opinions, we have unity of spirit. Help us to each listen respectfully and openly as others share their points of view, and help us to make wise decisions for the best possible outcomes for our community. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Thank you. And that brings us to the mayor's report, and it's nice to be back and see a nice full crowd here tonight. Want to thank Vice Mayor Darby for doing an excellent job. Two weeks ago, I was enjoying a little vacation time, so. For my mayor's report, I have a couple of items I wanted to report on. Last Friday, I was pleased to play golf at Gypsy Hill Golf Course, and the golf course office has been reopened. It has been closed since last July after they had the terrible damage during the storm. And they had a trailer parked out there on the side of the putting green that they were operating the cart barn out of. They had another trailer that was storing all the stuff that they removed from the from the building, and it had been a mess since last July. So it was, it was great to see that that's all been taken care of. It has a fresh coat of paint, looks wonderful. Also, on Monday, I was pleased to be able to present a proclamation to the Meritists. And there were our Salvation Army officers who have served here for four years and were reassigned while I was in Italy, and so I was able to go over there for a appreciation luncheon for them. If you get a chance to see the Meritists, please wish them well as they've been reassigned to Suffolk. And we will be receiving new Salvation Army officers, but they did a great job for the city of Stanton, and we definitely appreciate all their service. And finally, I got this letter when I was here the other day, and I don't, I just won't go into the details, I'm just going to read the the last paragraph says, "We simply want to personally thank you, your department." Oh, this is addressed to Jim Williams, and I'm CC'd on it. But this was a gentleman from Reston, Virginia, he says, "We simply want to personally thank you, your department and Officer Shiflett, for not just doing their jobs, but truly going out of their way as law enforcement officers to serve, to provide a service to us. It is an encouragement to us that our son and his wife live in a city where honest citizens and hardworking law enforcement officers coexist to the mutual benefit of everyone. I trust that this will encourage you as well." So, thank you to Jim Williams, Leslie, I don't know if you got a copy of this or not. But yeah, it came to me, and I think it was CC'd to John Avoli as well, but it's wonderful to come back from vacation and see that everything's running well in the city, so we have a great city that we live in. And now, that brings up additional members by members of council.
Mayor Claffey, I would just like to take a moment to have, you know, everyone just think about, we have Memorial Day coming up. We're going to celebrate this weekend and then on Monday. And, you know, we'd like to take a minute just to thank those who have paid the ultimate sacrifice.
Members of council?
Mr. Mayor, this, this last weekend, I had a chance to attend the NAACP Prayer Breakfast on there. That was, it was a graduation weekend, so I think a lot of people had conflicts on that one, but there were a whole lot of people there and a lot of great speakers and a amazing singer there as well, so it was just a great program, honor to attend.
Good.
Mayor Claffey?
Yes.
Yes, I also attended NAACP Unity Prayer Breakfast, which was well-attended. It was well-diversely attended. I also had the opportunity last week to, it was a community awareness event, and it was called "In Plain Sight: Human Trafficking Within the Valley", and it was hosted by the Shenandoah Valley Coalition Counteracting Human Trafficking. And the presenter, her name was Tanya Gold, and she's the Director of Anti-Human Trafficking Office of Attorney General from Virginia. It was, that also was well-attended. It's just amazing that, you know, that we have those things that's going on in our community, in our area, which is all over actually, and that there are people out here that is looking into trying to stop it. Also, I had the opportunity of going to a gala, so Rise, the organization from Waynesboro, which extends all from Augusta County and Stanton, had their five-year anniversary. So they had a five-year anniversary gala at the American Shakespeare Theater. So that was pretty cool and interesting.
Mr. Mayor?
Absolutely.
Yeah, thank you. I also had the opportunity to join many in this room at the, at the prayer breakfast, the unity breakfast, and truly enjoyed it. Really enjoyed seeing people I, that I know in the community and reconnecting with some old friends, and look forward to going again next year. And I also had the opportunity to attend a VPAS roundtable. This is the State Organization for Aging Services, and got to hear from many people in the area who are working for folks who are taking advantage of aging services, and I hope to see more of that in Stanton. If you don't know, VPAS offers a cafe, they call it the cafe, up at Montgomery Hall Park on Wednesdays from 10 to noon. And seniors can get a lunch, a very healthful lunch made by the Augusta Hospital and Augusta Health, and have exercise and fellowship for two hours a week. I'd love to see that to be expanded. I also had the opportunity to go to Kids Matter Day, and again, this was held in Gypsy Hill Park Gym because of the weather, just like Earth Day, and just tons of kids and families out for that, and it was just wonderful to see the diverse organizations and our community coming together for our kids.
Sounds like everybody's been very busy here. All right. Counselor Holmes has joined us, I see. Terry, can you hear us? Terry, can you hear us?
Yes, I can, I'm sorry.
All right, can everyone in the audience hear Counselor Holmes? All right, and we wish Terry a speedy recovery from his recent surgery.
Mayor Claffey?
Yes.
If I may, could we have the clerk ask Mr. Holmes to certify the closed meeting motion?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Would you like to certify the closed meeting motion to return to open meeting?
Yeah, yes, sir.
All right, thank you, that little bit of housekeeping. All right, that brings us to the, oh, well Terry, did you have anything you wanted to say?
No, I wished I was there with you guys instead of sitting here all crunched up in this chair. I can't wait till I can get up and move around better.
All right, well, we're rooting for your rapid recovery. All right, I will now entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
Mayor Claffey?
Yes.
Counselor Woods?
I move to approve the work session agenda. Is this, is this what I'm reading?
The work session and regular meeting for mail-in.
I move to approve the work session agenda and the regular meeting agenda.
Minutes.
The minutes.
Minutes.
Minutes. Minutes.
All right, a motion has been made, is there a second?
I second, this is Terry Holmes.
Thank you. Mr. Kessler?
Mr. Arrowood?
Aye.
Ms. Woods?
Aye.
Ms. Edwards?
Aye.
Mr. Holmes?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Darby?
Aye.
Mayor Claffey?
I will abstain, I was not present.
Motion carries.
Thank you, that brings us to item A on our regular meeting, which is a public hearing and consideration of an ordinance to vacate and abandon a portion of undeveloped Hale Street. Ms. Bogart?
Rodney Rhodes, our senior planner, will walk us through this item this evening.
Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Claffey, city council members, it's a pleasure to be here with you. Edward and Linda Costa have requested a vacation of an undeveloped portion of Hale Street located between 850 and 900 Maple Street, and extends south from Maple Street to the terminus at Lewis Creek. It's basically 200 feet deep. Staff reviewed the request back in 2022 and identified one issue. There's a sewer line that runs along Lewis Creek, and public works use this, you know, undeveloped street to gain access to that sewer line for any kind of maintenance and repair. Therefore, staff recommended that a 20-foot-wide public utility and access easement be retained by the city. So the applicant's attorney worked with the city's attorney to work out the details of that easement over the past six months or so, and staff has no other issues with the proposal. This section of Hale Street does not serve as a primary access for any properties. The Plan Committee, Plan Commission, at its September 15, 2022 meeting, conducted a public hearing. No one spoke in opposition to this request. And on a 5-0 vote, the commission voted to recommend approval of the vacation with the condition that staff work out the details of this easement prior to this being placed on council's agenda. And as I just previously noted, those, that deed has been worked out. I'll be glad to take any questions you have at this time or after you conduct the public hearing.
Does council have any questions at this time? All right, in a moment, I'll open up the public hearing. It is a time that council sets aside to hear from citizens and others about a specific topic. In this case, it will be the undeveloped Hale Street property. We ask that you please give your name, your address, then keep your remarks at five minutes or less. When you reach the five-minute time limit, I will let you know that your time has expired. For our Zoom participants, please raise your hand now if you wish to speak on this particular public hearing. If you raise your hand during this public hearing, you will also be able to raise your hand during other public hearings as well as matters from the public. Please keep your comments to five minutes as well. I will now open the public hearing. Welcome.
Thank you, good evening, Mayor Claffey, members of council.
Good evening.
My name is Angie Whitesell, with Valancelick and Whitesell, an attorney in Stanton, 125 South Augusta Street, Suite 3000, Stanton, Virginia. Represent Edward and Linda Cosca. We have gone before the planning commission, we have ironed out the wrinkles, we have a new platte, which evidences the 20 feet that will go to the Coscas, the 20 feet that will go to St. Stephen's Church. I believe both, both sides, both parties are very excited about this. Vice Mayor Darby and I know this area very well, our old stomping grounds. And as long as I can remember, it was a big green grassy space, and hopefully it will remain so. We have worked out the details of the deed to easement. It is ready to be signed once the ordinance is enacted. And we would respectfully ask that you, council, enact the ordinance this evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anyone else want to speak during the public hearing portion? Mr. Kessler?
No, sir.
All right, close the public hearing. I will entertain a motion.
Mayor Claffey, I move that council adopt the ordinance and approve the vacation as recommended by the planning commission.
Motion has been made, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Counselor Arrowood is second. Any further discussion? Mr. Kessler?
Mr. Holmes?
Aye.
Ms. Edwards?
Aye.
Ms. Woods?
Aye.
Mr. Arrowood?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Darby?
Aye.
Mayor Claffey?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Second item is a public hearing in consideration of the disposition of real property of Stanton Augusta Waynesboro Habitat for Humanity. Ms. Bogart?
Uh, Mr. John Blair, the city attorney, will walk.
Good evening, Mayor Claffey and members of council. Uh, before you is a, an item to dispose of property located uh, on the undeveloped portion of A Street where it intersects with Fourth Street. Uh, this property, if it's conveyed tonight, would go to Habitat Humanity, uh, for Stanton Augusta Waynesboro. The proposal is to develop 22 units of workforce housing. There are approximately five parcels, though one of those is a partial parcel of land that the city owns. Uh, the city acquired this a few decades ago, and it is, um, I, I see former counselor Mead in the, uh, audience. She had asked a question, and, uh, to clarify this, the address is listed as 600 Churchville Avenue, but that's because this property, when it was conveyed, became part of Gypsy Hill Park. And the address that we use for Gypsy Hill Park is 600 Churchville Avenue. So that's why it's listed as that. But again, this is on the undeveloped portion of A Street, um, for 22 units of workforce housing. And there has been a negotiated price of $15,000 for this, for these five parcels. You'll see in the proposed deed, there's a reverter clause that states that if this right-of-way is not, or if these parcels and right-of-way are not developed and dedicated to the city, meaning the right-of-way dedicated to the city by July 1st of 2025, then the property will revert back to the city. Um, that's to protect your interest as the organization. One other note here is that, um, if this is approved tonight, this is, you will be seeing this item come back before you because they're going, I believe Habitat is going to request that the city vacate that undeveloped portion of A Street. But the reason that that would occur, as well as the debt, as well as the transfer of parcel 21 tonight is so that they can complete the right-of-way. And again, the plan is, once that right-of-way is completed, it would be dedicated back to the city as improved right-of-way as a city street. Happy to take any questions, and I believe Mr. Arrowood may have comment.
I, I do. Uh, as a former employee of our local Habitat, I left earlier this year. Uh, I have no conflict with this matter. And, uh, a second item on this, uh, I'd like to propose an amended price for this disposition of property. The Habitat for Humanity is purchasing this land from the city, uh, to build much-needed affordable housing for our citizens. And with that in mind, uh, I move that we change the sale price of this land from $15,000 to $1.
I second that move, uh, Terry Holmes.
Motion has been made, and second, um, any further discussion by members of council? Is, uh, Rodney Rhodes present? Yeah. I, I went up there on the, uh, A Street, too, it's the terminus, and drove up there, and I have a question on Lot 9A, which I had your, uh, one of your assistants send me a schematic of where 9A ends. And it appears to me that Lot 9A comes out onto the golf course in a position where it could come into play. It does not line up with the end of the street on B Street. It, it sticks out farther into the golf course than where the housing on B Street ends. And I would be very reluctant to turn a lot over to Habitat that would be in danger of incoming golf balls. And I am aware of the fact that that particular corner does come into play. So I think you sent, the picture is not in our, our diagram. You cannot see where the golf course is, but I, I think we need to share that schematic that you sent me uh, with the rest of council before we agreed to 9A. I don't have any problem with the rest of the, the motion, but Lot 9A looks like it could be a, uh, a potential problem.
This is Terry Holmes. It looks like about a quarter of Lot, uh, 9A is longer than, uh, uh, it's, it's about a quarter of the part of the lot is over the, uh, the street.
Yes, yes, I would agree with that analysis.
Um, Mayor Claffey, council members, I, when I responded to your email,
There we, there we.
I copied, um, all of the council members and the city manager and the city attorney. The two of them are the ones that are on the briefing for this item. It is not a land use matter. So, but when the mayor asks a question of staff, I try to answer it. I did, after receiving your last email, I reached out to Chris Tuttle, Director of Parks and Rec, and he's been out there twice with Habitat, um, uh, folks. And he says that these proposed lots, houses are not near the fairway. And he has no issues whatsoever with, um, them acquiring this property.
Well, I drove down there on, on Monday, and 9A borders the fairway. You can see the fairway turning right there. You can also see the cart path that's, that's coming up to the 11th green is right there in front of Lot 9A. Now, the rest of all those housing and lots that are there are significantly back. But I, I truly recommend that we go out there and look at 9A. If you can see where 9A ends, it is not lined up with where the end of the property is on B Street. That, that's my only concern.
Other drawing is accurate.
I, I don't know if not.
Yeah, I, I, go ahead. I'll just say, I drove up as well, and I drove up to the cul-de-sac, and you really are on the park. I didn't have the plat with me, um, but yeah, if you were living right there on that lot, and I don't know that you can be killed by a golf ball, but, I mean, having golf balls maybe coming flying at your, your, your home or your fence, your windows, your car windows, um, it, and you really are right there on the golf course.
Well, it, are, are you all proposing to table this matter? And to, I, again, Mr. Tuttle made the response, but if, if you all don't feel comfortable voting on the matter tonight, you could table it.
Let's table it at this time. And I mean, you know, how many different lots are up there? Fifteen? Fifteen?
We built 22 units.
They're building 20.
They're building 22.
Now, there are five units that are in question here.
Yeah.
Five lots, five lots.
Well, 9A is the only one that I have any issue with. The rest of it, I'm 100% in favor of doing.
Yeah.
That's, that's the only, I think, if you want to approve the rest of it with the exception of 9A, or we go out there and, and see where 9A is gonna?
Well, the one thing I would, um, point out, Mayor Claffey, is, um, tonight you're voting on lots 1, 3, 5, and a portion of Lot 7.
Right.
And Lot 21. Lot 9A would remain in city, city hands.
Okay.
So you're not conveying that to Habitat?
9A is not.
9A, no, the, the lots are 1, 3, 5, and a portion of 7.
So if 9A is not being conveyed, then therefore, I'm 100% in favor.
And then 21 as well. Well, first, there is a motion and a second to amend the price, and that's probably appropriate before the public hearing.
Okay. Any discussion from members of council to about the price change?
Anyone? I'll just say, um, that, uh, this council has talked a lot about workforce housing. Um, it's part of our economic development strategy, and, um, I think this would be a step in that direction. So I would second Counselor Arrowood's, third, third Counselor Arrowood's motion. I can't count the three.
And I don't, and I don't think the $15,000 is going to break the city. All right, so, um, Mr. Kessker, could you call the roll, please?
Ms. Edwards?
Aye.
Ms. Woods?
Aye.
Mr. Arrowood?
Aye.
Mr. Holmes?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Darby?
Aye.
Mayor Claffey?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, so now we're at the public hearing.
John, can I ask one question real quick?
Sure.
So Lot 9A is basically a buffer.
Correct.
So it won't be.
It's going to be combined with the residue of Lot 7. Correct.
Okay. All right, thank you.
We will not be building on Lot 9A.
Not, 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 to my knowledge at this point, again, all you are conveying, you are not conveying Lot 9A.
Very good.
To Habitat.
And I'm happy.
Thank you, Mr. Blair. That's helpful. Thank you, Mr. Rhodes, also.
I will now open the public hearing for anyone that wishes to speak. Anyone wish to speak on the disposition of real property to Stanton Augusta Waynesboro Habitat for Humanity?
Hi, I'm Brenda Mead. I live on Sherwood Avenue in Stanton. I'm also a member of the Board of Directors and Executive Committee of Habitat for Humanity, and I stand here in support of the transfer of this property to Habitat for Humanity. I recently sent a copy of the most current annual ALIS report to members of council. ALIS is an acronym that stands for Asset Limited, Income Constrained, and Employed. The ALIS report represents the growing number of working families who are unable to afford the basics of housing, childcare, food, transportation, healthcare, and technology. These are the workers who often struggle to keep their own households from financial ruin while keeping our local communities running. Habitat-qualified families make up 33% of these, the ALIS households in Stanton. 46% of all households in Stanton are either ALIS or they're at or below the federal poverty level. That means if you, if you, if you drive through the city, I don't, I don't need to tell you that that's half, that's almost half the people in this city who are in this, uh, in this category. Who are they? 55% of personal care aides are in this category. 54% of cooks. 53% of waitstaff. 50% of nursing assistants. 45% of cashiers. 41% of general laborers. 40% of stalkers and order fillers. 36% of retail salespersons. 35% of fast food and counter workers. And there are more, uh, with smaller categories. These families live precariously, paycheck to paycheck. Their lives are messy and unpredictable. Sometimes those who qualify for our homeownership programs are unable to complete the requirements that we set out for them. And when that happens, our Habitat staff and board respond quickly to find families between 30 and 60% of the AMI to purchase those homes. In other words, we stay true to our mission of giving working-class families the opportunity to own a home and build wealth. So is there really an affordable housing shortage in Stanton? If you'll talk to a Realtor at this time, you would know that there are six homes on the market in Stanton for under $200,000. Only one of those is FHA qualified. In other words, eligible for conventional mortgages. The property that we're talking about at the end of A Street will allow Habitat to complete 22 additional homes in our community for, uh, working, working families. And so I, I invite city council to become educated about today's Saw Habitat for Humanity. We're no longer building for just, building just one home a year. Last year, we built five. I challenge anyone in this room to, to name a single private home builder who can claim that track record. Our goal is to continue to build capacity and more homes, like these 22 homes we're talking about now. We've changed our home building strategy from volunteer stick-built homes to modular homes. Our local habitat is respected at the state and national level for innovation and efficiency. The city and Habitat have agreed to a price of now $1 for the, for the property. I congratulate you on that. But the true value of this small, underutilized property is the opportunity for 22 additional families to own their own home and begin building family wealth. The value of that opportunity is immeasurable. The Stanton Plan adopted by the city council just two weeks ago states clearly that you will prioritize affordable housing and housing for working families. This is one very small way city council can act to increase the supply of affordable housing and housing for workforce families in Stanton. The other way city council can act is to move with urgency to create a housing commission. Thank you.
Mr. Kessker, anyone on Zoom?
Uh, no, sir.
Anyone else wishing to speak?
I'm Dr. Mary Miller. Um, I live at 471 Elbomarle Avenue. And, um, being a physician, I've been in the health field since 1959. And, um, I'm really interested in healthcare. And it's awful hard to be healthy when you don't have a place to live. So I hope you all approve of this. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Mr. Kessker?
No, sir.
All right. Enter motion.
Mayor Claffey?
Yes, sir.
I move that the city approve the ordinance conveying title of a portion of 600 Churchville Avenue to Augusta Waynesboro Habitat for Humanity Incorporated for $1 as presented.
Thank you. A motion has been made. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Brad Erwin is seconding that. Mr. Kessker, you can call the roll, please.
Ms. Woods?
Aye.
Mr. Holmes?
Aye.
Mr. Arrowood?
Aye.
Ms. Edwards?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Darby?
Aye.
Mayor Claffey?
Aye.
Motion carries.
And it brings up item C, which is a consideration of a request by Flying Rock Property LLC to withdraw 801 Commerce Road containing approximately 96.823 acres from the Bell's Lane Agricultural Forest District. Ms. Bogart?
Mr. Rhodes will also walk through this item.
Good evening, once again. Thank you. I'll jump right into the first request here, which is the proposed withdrawal of 801 Commerce Road from Bell's Lane Agricultural District. The applicant requested, uh, this removal from the Ag, from the Bell's Lane Agricultural District in order to develop the site with a solar energy facility. Land within the Overlake District shall be used solely for agricultural and forestal products and product, production. Therefore, removal of the property from Ag District is a prerequisite to, to developing the property for a solar energy facility. The Bell's Lane Agricultural District consists of approximately 1,700 acres. And based on my math, um, this 97 acres represents approximately 5.7% of that agricultural district. Uh, the request to withdraw the property from the district was considered by the Stanton Agriculture and Forests Advisory Committee on meetings on February 6, 2023, um, and February 24, 2023. Uh, the committees, uh, prepared a report, which is included in your. The committees prepared a report, which is included in your packet, and I'll just hit on a couple of high points. They note that Stanton's zoning code states no land within a district shall be removed except with the approval of the Council of the City of Stanton upon a showing of good and reasonable cause. And this language in this, in this Stanton zoning code mirrors the language in the Virginia Code. Unfortunately, Virginia Code doesn't define what good and reasonable cause is. It just states that a good and reasonable cause cannot be arbitrary or capricious and cannot be willfully unreasonable. One of the benefits of having property in Ag Forest District is being under land use taxation. And in the report, they noted the general purpose of land use taxation in Virginia is to preserve agricultural, horticultural, forestry, and open-spaced lands and to allow for the timely development of land. They also note in the report that only a small portion of the property is considered prime agricultural soil. I think that's about 77% of the property, generally some soil along the string banks. The committee, on a three to two vote, recommended approval of the applicant's request to remove the property from the Bells Lane Agricultural District. I would note that if this property is removed from the agricultural district, it would be subject to the underlying zoning, and in this case, that is I-1 light industrial district. I will take a pause at this time to see if council has any questions about the first requests in this proposal, the removal from the Ag District.
Questions from council? Proceed.
Thank you. As far as a special use permit for the development of a solar energy facility, I will let the applicant go through the details of this proposal, but it includes a 15.75 megawatt utility scale solar facility and a five megawatt, megawatt community scale solar facility. The original application also included a 5.5 megawatt battery, battery storage facility, but it has been withdrawn, is no longer under consideration. The applicant held two community meetings on February the 22nd and April the 5th. Approximately 20 to 30 people showed up at those meetings, and that included quite a few representatives from council, the planning commission, city staff, and those on the applicant's team. I, I believe there are probably about eight to 15 residents at those two meetings. As far as reviewing the special use permit, I think it's important to take that in context with the underlying zoning district, which, as I previously stated, is I-1 light industrial district. In your, in the briefing, I noted some of the allowed uses by right in the I-1 light industrial district, and I'll just mention a few of those. Building material sales yard and lumberyard, including the sale of rock, sand, and gravel. Outdoor storage facilities for coal, coke, building materials, sand, gravel, stone, lumber, open storage of construction equipment and supplies. Public utility service yard or electrical receiving and transforming station. I guess Dominion Power could put a substation here under our current zoning. And then a couple of uses that are allowed if they're within an enclosed building. The manufacturing, compounding, processing, packaging, assembling, or treatment of various products. And I would note that there's no time restraints on that. That could be a 24/7 business. Also, the sale, storage, and sorting of junk, waste, discarded, or salvaged materials, machinery, or equipment. And I would note that all those are allowed by right, so with administrative approval, with a site plan, they could be, those uses could go there. The approval would not be subject to public review, plan commission input, or city council authorization. As a planner, my review must be based on land use impacts. I've heard from the public of various other impacts, but from my perspective, the land use impacts are what's important for me to present to you, and it's also what the plan commission reviews. And obviously, the most obvious land use impact are the visual impacts. Due to the topography of this site, along Commerce Road, you will barely see this facility. However, along New Hope Road, also due to topography, you will see this facility from various different vantage points. I mean, that the applicant has proposed to install a 50-foot vegetated buffer along the public road frontage and also along those adjoining properties that are not zone industrial. Another land use impact is the impact on adjoining property values. No assessment has been made on this. It's rather difficult to do such an assessment. I would note that the development of a site with a solar energy facility would preclude the property from being developed with those other industrial uses that I mentioned that may have much greater impacts on the property value. Another land use impact are environmental impacts. And this project will be developed in conformance with all applicable federal, state, and local laws and regulations. As far as long-term impacts, unlike most uses, it is practical to decommission a solar energy facility at the end of its useful life and restore it to its pre-development condition. I, I don't know what other industrial uses you could do that. We have, you know, throughout the country, we have these vacant abandoned industrial buildings, commercial strip malls that sit there for years and years just being an eyesore. That will not happen with, with this type of use. Impacts on public facilities and public infrastructure. The applicant notes that, that while the project will increase the tax base provided to the city, it will not have any significant draw on public resources such as schools, sewer, and water, roads, or other public services and facilities. Once this is constructed, they estimate that it will have one, it will generate one or two trips to the site a week. It will be unmanned. I'm not sure of what other use that would have so few impacts on public facilities and infrastructure, other than maybe a communications tower. This project was reviewed for, for compliance with the Conference of Plan. And although solar energy facilities are not identified as a goal or an objective of the Conference of Plan, it helps the city meet other Conference of Plan goals and objectives related to renewable energy. I'll mention two of those. One, the, one of the objectives is to promote energy conservation practices and the potential use of alternative, alternative energy sources. And another objective to encourage green and sustainable initiatives and integrate emerging technologies that promote use of efficient and renewable energy. For those reasons, staff finds this proposal consistent with the Conference of Plan. Another benefit of this proposal is the shared solar subscription, and I'll let the applicant go into detail about that. I would note that while the monetary benefit of participating in this program is, is rather minimal, it offers residents an opportunity to participate in renewable energy without the expense of installing individual solar panels. In summary, it is staff's opinion that the proposal with appropriate conditions meets the requirements of the Stanton zoning code for approval. The primary impacts with the project are with construction and visual impacts. It is estimated this construction will take approximately six to 12 months. So the impact is of a limited duration. And while the visual impacts will remain, it is arguable that the visual impacts of the proposed project are less than other permitted uses of the property, and other permitted uses would have greater impacts such as noise, traffic, and light pollution. And the proposed project is unique, and that requires minimal grading to the site, and the site can and will be returned to its pre-existing condition at the end of its facility's useful life. Staff recommends that city council follow the recommendation of the Stanton Agriculture and Forestal Advisory Committee and the Planning Commission to remove 801 Commerce Road from Bells Lane Agricultural District. The reason for removing the property from the district is not arbitrary or capricious or willfully unreasonable. Only 7% of the property is considered prime agricultural soil. The property has not been used for crop, uh, crop produc, production, but has only been used for grazing of cattle. And also, based on the findings contained in the staff report, Stafford recommends approval of the special use permit for the development of 801 Commerce Road with a solar energy facility with the 20 conditions as noted in the briefing. I'll be glad answering questions you have about those conditions, but will not read those at this time.
Questions from council?
If I may?
Yes, sir.
Finish up. Sorry, I took a pause. The planning commission conducted a public hearing on April 20th, 2023. It was a combined public hearing on the withdrawal of 801 Commerce Road from the Ag Forest District and the special use permit request. During the public hearing, I believe there are 10 people that spoke, two that spoke in favor of the proposal, six that voted, spoke against it, and two that I would say wanted more time for the city to review this proposal. After the public hearing, on a four to one vote, the commission voted to recommend approval of the withdrawal from the A-1 Agricultural Forest District. And on, also on a four to one vote, the commission affirmed that the proposed solar energy project is in substantial accord with adopted Conference of Plan. And lastly, on a similar four to one vote, the commission voted to recommend approval of the special use permit with the 20 conditions noted above. I would note at that meeting, they modified to the conditions and added condition number 20. I will note that on May 16, I received a revised concept plan. And I presented that to the planning commission at their meeting on May 18. There were basically two changes to the original concept plan. And one is that there has now been a field delineation of wetlands and streams, so that has been updated on, on a concept plan with more specific, exact information. And also Dominion has asked OICOS to move its point of interconnection, which will also move the substation to a cleared area, which will not impact a 50-foot buffer. It moves a little bit further south on the property. And I presented that to the commission. They had no concerns with the moving of that station, that substation to the south. They did question whether or not it clearly showed how much area would need to be graded in order to do that. And they also questioned whether or not the limits of impact shown on the concept plan were sufficient to handle the stormwater management facilities that would be required for this facility based on a city council's adoption of an amendment to the city code two weeks ago. I'd be glad to take any questions you have at this time, and I would welcome the opportunity to come back after the public hearing to address any issues that council may have.
Questions from council?
Mr. Rhodes, since we're going to be addressing, taking this property out of Ag, the Ag District first. I, this gentleman has purchased this property, the developer purchased the property. And I understand that every 10 years, property owners have to, is it reapply for, to be part of the Ag Forest District? Can you explain what that, what that process is?
Well, this was most, these properties were renewed, I believe, early in 2020. I think we just had a new council come on board.
Right.
So about, and this was for a 10-year period. Prior to that, I think it was maybe seven years.
Okay.
But council chose to go with a 10-year period. So we're about three and a half years through that, so in another six and a half, they can opt not to continue in the Ag District.
And then what happens if you opt not to continue in the Ag District?
It comes out and goes back to its underlying zoning, which is I-1 light industrial.
Thank you, Mr. Rhodes.
Other questions?
This is Terry Holmes. Rodney, will the, any of the runoff or go into the sewer system of the city? Or will it all be containment ponds and stuff like that?
Well, there would need to be a detailed stormwater management plan at the site plan stage. That's a detailed engineered plan. And, you know, it would have to be handled. I do not see any of this going into the city's storm drains. But that's something that staff would review at that time.
And would the entrance probably come off of New Hope Road?
Uh, no, the proposal is to use the current access off of Commerce Road that's currently utilized by BDOT and Virginia State Police.
Thank you.
Further questions?
Yes, sir. If I could, I wasn't clear about this, but there, there is no requirement at this, at city council to have a public hearing regarding the removal of the property from the Ag Forest District. You, you may want to take comments from the applicant at this time and then act on that matter before conducting the public hearing.
Correct. We're more than welcome to hear from you. Mr. Mr. Blair, let us ask you for advice. Do we want to handle C separately?
Well, here would be my advice. I think first you should probably hear from the applicant. And then after hearing from the applicant, again, as Mr. Rhodes stated, you do not have to have a public hearing drawing the property from the Ag Forest District. You can either vote at that time and then have your public hearing about the special use permit. You can, if you wish, just have the public hearing and then vote on both items. But you would need to first vote on the Ag Forest withdrawal and then the special use permit.
I think we ought to complete item C and then go into the public hearing.
Okay.
Do the Flying Rock representatives want to speak on the Ag Forest withdrawal?
Mayor Claffey, I suggest it be done all at once, the presentation from the applicant. I have done all of my presentation for both items.
Let's just see if she has anything she wants to say about the Ag Forest. We're going to handle C first.
Okay. Sorry.
You're fine. Thanks.
Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Claffey. Members of council, I'm Lori Schweller, attorney with Williams Mullen, representing the applicant. Also representing the applicant is Daniel Chung, one of the owners of the, of the two LLCs, which are wholly owned by OICOSolar. And also with us tonight is Rick Thomas with Timmons Group, who is civil engineer on the project. I do have a presentation for you, and what I'd like to do is just skip down to a slide that addresses the first item.
Yes.
So, of course, we're addressing right now withdrawal from the Agricultural Forest District. So as Mr. Rhodes mentioned, land may be removed by the owner upon a showing of good and reasonable cause. And some of the considerations that the state code lists as reasonable to consider when you're making that decision include soil rating and group, non-soil factors relating to the agricultural use of a site, factors related to development pressures, and other public values of a site. Also, as you heard, this property is not prime farmland overall. Only the red portion is prime farmland, which is approximately 7% of the land. At the Agricultural Forest Committee meeting that we attended, we heard a lot of discussion, and I wanted to provide to you some of the reasons why the committee did vote in favor of removing this property from the Bells Hill Agricultural Forest District. And there was input from almost every member, so I won't attribute these, but the fact that there was, it's not prime farmland, it's very rocky, that solar is not destructive to the land, has low impact, that we're retaining wildlife corridors and riparian buffers, that DEQ and the city, of course, will regulate water runoff. The landowner's property rights were cited. City assessor talked about the history of the overlay, a primary purpose of which was when the city annexed land from Augusta County, it enabled farmers to continue to farm their land agricultural purposes and keep the taxes low with land use taxation. And so with the Agricultural Forest District, all that land stays in land use taxation. And so with the Agricultural Forestal District, all that land stays in land use taxation at very low assessment rates. Of course, if it's brought out, we would be paying rollback taxes, which are all the deferred taxes for the past five years. And of course, we'd be paying real estate taxes for industrial use. Also mentioned, word that it's a public benefit, economically beneficial to the city in Virginia to develop this property into solar. And finally, that if not approved by the city, the landowner could just bring it out of the district when the term expires in 2030. So those were the reasons that the committee decided to vote in favor of removing it from the district. And of course, the planning commission did vote for to in favor of that as well.
Questions from council?
I just, Mr. Blair, I'm just going to bring up a concern that I had heard from community members. And I just wanted to make sure there was concern that there were only five members of the Ag Forestal Advisory Board present at that vote. Is that still considered a legal vote?
It is. And here's a couple of points. I know that there's been some concern that there are vacancies. I think, is that the, what you're referring to? There were vacancies, but there are attorney general's opinions that say simply because there are vacancies does not mean that a committee or body can't vote on the matter.
Thank you, Mr. Blair.
So I have just one question. It says the landowner could opt out anyway when term expires in 2020, 2030. So by the purchases, acquiring the land from the seller, is that mean they already opted out of the Ag Forest? Because if you're selling it, that means that maybe you already opted out of Ag Forest.
That's a good question. If I understand you correctly, Counselor Woods, Flying Rock Property LLC purchased this property. Flying Rock is an affiliate of the applicant, OICOS, and the LLCs that are bringing these special use permit applications to you. So your applicant, for all intents and purposes, already owns this property, purchased it already from the farmer who owned it previously. So his intent, of course, is to develop a solar facility and but cannot do that, of course, unless you agree that it should be withdrawn from the Agricultural Forestal District. If you did not agree, then he would have to hold it in the Agricultural Forestal District and would not be able to develop it in an industrial use until 2030, at which time he could just voluntarily remove it from the district.
Further questions? Anything else y'all want to add?
No, sir. Thank you very much.
I will entertain a motion.
Are we only voting on C?
Mayor Claffey?
Yes, Counselor.
I move the council approve the withdrawal of 801 Commerce Road from the Bales Lane A1 Agricultural Forest District as recommended by the planning commission.
Thank you. A motion has been made. Is there a second?
I'll second that, Mr. Claffey.
Seconded by Counselor Edwards. Any further discussion? Mr. Kestrel, would you call them all?
Mr. Arrowood?
Aye.
Ms. Woods?
No.
Ms. Edwards?
Aye.
Mr. Holmes?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Darby?
Aye.
Mayor Claffey?
Aye.
Motion carries.
And that brings us to item D, which is the public hearing and consideration of a request by Flying Rock Property LLC for a special use permit under the provisions of Stanton City Code, Section 18.75.0401, for the development of solar energy facility at 801 Commerce Road. Ms. Bur.
Mayor Claffey, before we open the public hearing, I think at this time, the applicant's attorney would give the second part of her presentation.
Correct. Welcome back.
Thank you, Mayor Claffey. City councilors, again, I'm Lori Schweller with Williams Mullen, representing the applicant. I'd like to thank those of you who have attended our community meetings, and I hope I don't bore you. There will be some information that you've seen before, but I'd like to present it to you and to the citizens who have gathered. So we've addressed item number one. Of course, we're requesting also your approval tonight of a special use permit and approval of our siding agreement. The property is located at 801 Commerce Road, and it is owned by Flying Rock Property. It's approximately 95 and a half acres. These parcels were combined into one single parcel. Access is over an easement, a public easement, which is also shared by VDOT and the state police. You can see right there the location of that access. And we're working, the applicant's working with VDOT and the state police to make sure that that access is designed in a way that suits their needs too. We've had discussions with them. So we've talked about withdrawal. The underlying zoning, of course, is industrial I-1. And last fall, you approved a zoning text amendment to allow solar in industrial I-1 and I-2 with a special use permit. There's only 4.15% of the acreage in the city zoned industrial, so there's very limited land for solar facilities. This is the concept plan that Timmons has prepared. You can see three shaded areas. At the top is blue. This is where the five megawatt community solar or shared solar facility would be located. The green area, all the central large yellow-green area, that's the utility scale, up to 15.75 megawatt utility scale facility. And then there's a small pink area where the collector substation would be. And that's where the point of interconnection with the existing Dominion Energy lines would be located. So it's all one project for your purposes. But Dominion considers it two projects because one would be dedicated to the shared solar program. It's all electricity that would go into the Dominion Energy grid. Also, as you can see in the site plan, we're proposing 50-foot setbacks for all equipment, onsite panels, inverters, collector station. Anything on the site would be setback 50 feet. And there would be, of course, a 50-foot riparian buffer on either side of all streams, wetlands, and ponds. Within that 50-foot wide setback is a 50-foot wide vegetative buffer where it abuts all non-industrial districts such as Commerce Road, the YMCA. So that conceptual vegetative buffer has fencing and then trees and shrubs, as you can see in this conceptual plan, and then the property line. Also, the project will be pollinator-friendly, planted with native plants, shrubs, trees, and grasses, using Pollinator Smart best practices. We did prepare visual renderings at the request of the city. These were prepared earlier, and they don't show the full 50-foot buffer. But you can get a sense of visibility of the project from Commerce Road because of the railroad bed, which is raised. You probably won't see the site at all regardless of buffering. From New Hope Road, because you're on an elevation and the site is a gently swelling site, you will see the panels from New Hope Road, even when the buffer is at maturity. And from Stanton Alliance Church, also on New Hope Road, you will also, at a distance there. From the residential neighborhood to the west of the project, there won't be any visibility except perhaps from one or two homes from their backyards, which we weren't able to explore. But we thought there might be breaks in the trees where you could see the project through the trees, but for the most part, not visible from the residential neighborhood to the west. Virginia Clean Economy Act was adopted in 2020. And as you may have heard, the state has mandated that Dominion Energy deliver all of its electricity from renewable sources by 2045 and Appalachian Power by 2050. So where are these, you know, where is this clean energy to come from? It comes from projects like this from all around the state. This is an energy distribution line map, just to show you that the point of interconnection is on the property. It would connect to an existing distribution line, which would connect to an existing substation. All of that already there in the Dominion infrastructure. We wanted to show you what the panels would look like. The project proposes fixed tilt panels, which are best used on more rolling topography. They would be 10 to 15 feet tall, much shorter than a building would be, of course. And then interspersed throughout the project inverters, like you see to the bottom left. The project would use a highly efficient new technology that improves on crystalline silicone panels. They are encased and sealed between layers of plastic with glass on top and polymer below. Even in the very unlikely event of breaking, they would stay intact. These panels are comprised primarily of glass and aluminum, and rest is mostly plastics. There is no dangerous substance within these to leak into the groundwater. And so because of the strong physical and chemical attachment to other components. So I'd like to talk about community benefits of the project. First, furthering Virginia's clean energy goals. It would produce power to serve approximately 3,500 homes. And that breaks down to about 2,800 from the utility scale and 7800 in the community solar project, depending on energy usage. So it's an opportunity for citizens of Stanton and others to subscribe to the shared solar program. The project uses minimal city services, unlike other development, which could have an impact on traffic, noise, light, and so on. We are proposing pollinator, stream buffers, and wildlife corridors. And of course, you'd have an increased tax revenue from the industrial use. So a word about the shared solar program. This is a Dominion Energy program established by the General Assembly in 2020. Right now, it only applies to Dominion Energy customers. Every year, General Assembly talks about expanding it, so I assume that eventually it will be expanded to other providers. It allows Dominion customers to subscribe and save money on their electric bills. And that's all there is to it. They simply subscribe and then they get a discount. At least 30% of subscribers to the shared solar program must be what are often referred to as low to median income, LMI, or low-income customers. That's defined by statute as 80% of the area median income. There is a minimum bill of $55.10 from Dominion Energy, but that does not apply to low-income customers. OICOS would be engaging a third-party subscription service, Arcadia, located in Northern Virginia. They would be responsible for marketing to Stanton, letting them know about the program, allowing people to sign up on their website. And though Dominion gives the credit, Arcadia deals with the administration of the program. And OICOS is setting this up, so for the first 12 months of subscription, only citizens of Stanton may subscribe. To be clear, we must have 30% low-income customers, but that doesn't leave Stantonites who want to sign up out in the cold, because they can still sign up. There are other projects that provide the shared solar program. And after 12 months, the opportunity is open to Dominion customers statewide. Just for background for reference, this is your chart. The area median income for Stanton is right here for different family sizes, or household sizes, rather, just for reference. So anyone making 80%, this is our chart of 80% income limits. Other financial benefits to the city itself. Revenue increases through taxes. As I mentioned, rollback taxes of over $52,000, which you will receive. An increase in the assessment from land use to fair market value, which will give you over $200,000 over 30 years by our current estimates. We don't know how the land will be assessed at this point. Of course, you'll receive machinery and tools tax. And we're proposing a $200,000 cash payment through the siding agreement. We have provided decommissioning agreements for both projects, which would require at the end of the life of each project, removing everything there and recycling equipment. There would be a bond or a letter of credit posted to make sure all of this happens and that the site is restored. After this zoning process today, if you were to approve the special use permit, it would then go through the permit by rule, which is a state permit, which is also very rigorous and includes reviews by Department of Historic Resources, Department of Wildlife Resources, Department of Conservation and Recreation. So the project approval timeline, the interconnection agreement for the utility scale facility is ready to be signed. The interconnection agreement for community solar would be ready by July. Site planning would take four to six months. DEQ permit by rule, six to 12 months. And then the stormwater management permit from DEQ, another six months, also overlapping with the PBR process, and then on to construction permit. So we estimate approximately two years, so that construction could begin sometime in 2024, hopefully. So that's the primary part of our presentation. I have other information to share with you if you have questions. Thank you.
Could you explain how you came to the $200,000 price for the siding agreement?
Yes, we did a broad survey of solar facilities across the state. And the vast majority of those were in the, you know, 100 to 200 megawatt range. And so we looked at what those were offering and the thousands of acres that were in those. And then we polled people who were involved in the solar industry and attorneys who worked on those about small facilities and what they were doing. And we realized that what you're seeing with the very large ones is not on par with what you're seeing on the small ones. So we adjusted that per megawatt based on what the conversations that we had with others to get to a reasonable amount.
In the decommissioning status portion of this, there's a surety bond mentioned, you know, to decommission the property. How is that handled? And what is the amount to the finances set aside and who controls that? And could you explain that a little bit, please?
I'll do my best at a very high level, so that the decommissioning plan in your special use permit application package estimates the cost of decommissioning. And of course, that cost could change over time. And so we are required by the special use permit conditions to revisit that cost every five years to make sure that bond is appropriate. But we would work with the city to post a bond or a letter of credit, just like you would do for roads or anything else that we promised to do for the city and land development. And that would secure that obligation for the life of the project.
And has a dollar total been determined for that?
It is set out in those decommissioning plans. Yes, sir.
Yes. On that, are you finished? I'm sorry, Mayor Claffey.
Go ahead.
Sorry. Just along those lines with the decommissioning. Yes, I've read through the prices, the cost, all the things that are going to be hauled away. There is no salvage value that's going to be taken into account with that. But it also doesn't say where the, where the materials will go. Clearly, I don't think we want to see them going into our landfill, our local landfill. So could you speak to where the materials will go after they are decommissioned?
That's a great question. There are places that do recycle those. But I think at this point, we've been trying not to answer that with too much specificity because we hope that in 25 to 30, 35 years, there will be very specific locations that can do recycling of all the components of the panels and other equipment. So what we have right now is a little bit higher level. You know, we recycle what we can and dispose of what we can. You know, we recycle what we can and dispose of what we can, not in the Stanton landfill. There are certain specific locations that handle these materials.
Thank you.
And I guess to dovetail off that, generally, are you familiar with when localities have an ordinance that specifies the decommissioning piece of, of how this is going to work? And since we're, we're using a special use permit. And that's because that gives us more ability to look at each individual project.
Yes.
Correct? Versus the ordinance where it would be a blanket ordinance for like the whole project?
Yes, yes. And you, you have conditions in that special use permit specifically committing us to those various obligations and description of decommissioning in the decommissioning plans, which will be readdressed every five years. So we can certainly have those conversations periodically.
What's the specific life? What's the average lifespan of a regular solar panel barring damage from weather or anything like that?
Well, the ones that, that, that we're looking at have a warranty of 25 years, but they often last longer than that. But regardless of how long individual panels last, they can be replaced, of course, on site. So there's no fear of having, you know, malfunctioning panels on the land.
And do you, do you typically do a wholesale replacement? Or do you replace separate ones like in phases?
I, I don't know the answer to that question. It may be soon, too soon to tell.
It is 25 years from now.
Mayor Claffey, I hate to interrupt, but I noticed that Counselor Robertson is on. So I think before we go any further, you probably need to allow his participation by electronic means. Sorry to interrupt.
Thank you. I didn't notice. On May 19th, I received a request from Counsel Robertson to participate remotely in the May 25th City Council meeting due to a personal matter that prevents his physical attendance at the meeting. Pursuant to Freedom of Information Act, I will now ask Counsel Robertson to state the personal matter which makes him unable to attend tonight's meeting.
I asked the council's indulgence, I apologize for coming in late. We had a breakdown in one of the old cars and finally got it going and got it back. I'm on vacation in Gatlinburg, Tennessee at the Graystone Lodge.
Thank you. Welcome. I will now entertain a motion to allow Counsel Robertson's remote participate, participation in this meeting pursuant to Stanton City Council Procedure Memorandum Number Three.
Mayor Claffey.
Yes.
Pursuant to Stanton City Council Procedure Member Number Three, I move to allow Counsel Robertson to remotely participate in the May 25th, 2023 Stanton City Council meeting due to a personal matter.
Motion has been made. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Mr. Kestner, please call a roll.
Mr. Arrowood.
Aye.
Ms. Woods.
Aye.
Mr. Holmes.
Mr. Holmes. You're muted.
Aye.
Thank you.
Ms. Edwards.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Darby.
Aye.
Mayor Claffey.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Good everyone in the audience here, Counsel Robertson and Counsel Holmes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you and welcome more.
Thank you.
All right. Back to the business at hand. Thank you for pointing that out.
Anyone else?
Questions?
Ms. Schweller, can I just go back to, of course, I'm concerned about the benefits also to Stanton. So I was very excited about the 10% discount, but I, I understand that many of our residents will not be able to access because they are on the cooperative, the Shandover Valley Cooperative. And I also would like to say that it might be difficult for us to get to that 30%. What you're saying is at least 30% of our households need to have applied or subscribed to the shared solar before anyone not in that income bracket can apply? Is that correct?
It's, it's very confusing. So during that 12 month period, it will be open for subscriptions to any Stanton residence.
Okay.
Any Stanton residence. And the, but this particular project needs to have at least 30% low income subscribers. So if, let's say, all 25,000 Stanton residents subscribe, anyone who doesn't have a place, and this one, would flow over into another shared solar facility that Arcadia manages. It, what it means is it doesn't mean that no one would be left out. It just means we need to make sure, I just wanted to make sure you understood that we need to make sure that for this particular project, we need 30% low income. It will be seamless to those who are subscribing.
Okay, are you saying 30% of our population, 30% of the total subscribers?
30% of the subscribers.
Okay.
For the five megawatt project.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
No, you're fine. It is a little confusing.
And you, this may have been up there, you may have said it, but the script subscription does not cost anything, correct?
That's right. All you do is sign up and then you're signed up. If you, if you move, you know, if you go to, you know, move across town, move across Virginia, that's fine. You are subscribed with the Dominion program and Dominion credits your bill through the life of that program, which I think is now 25 years.
Thank you.
Further questions from counsel?
There's just concern that amongst the, our community, that this is our first solar project. And we want to make sure that there's a lot of expertise on the project. I know you have Timmins Group and I, your engineers here. And I just wondered the experience level and the number of projects perhaps that we've consulted on. And just to hear a little bit about that would be helpful.
Well, I can tell you that Timmins Group has consulted on over one gigawatt of solar. Most of that in Virginia. It has, it has teams experienced in stormwater regulation, civil engineering, every aspect, historic resources, every aspect of solar development. So they have extensive experience on solar throughout Virginia. I'll let Rick talk further if you'd like to.
Yeah, would you mind, Rick? Thank you, Mr. Thomas. And could you please explain what one gigawatt means for, for those of us who don't deal in solar on a daily basis? Do you want to come to the podium? Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Rick Thomas. I'm with the Timmins Group. And thank you, Lori, for indicating our level of experience with, with utility, utility scale solar in Virginia. And yes, we have consulted on one, over 1,000 megawatts, which is a gigawatt of projects that have actually been constructed. So it's a rather large amount. And we've been fortunate enough to represent solar developers throughout the state in nearly every aspect of the development process from early stage permitting, which is where we are on this particular project, through the development, construction, and commissioning of these, these projects. So this is a business unit that we've been advocating for, for a number of years. And it's a market that has been very robust as of late. And we're very fortunate to be a part of it.
About how many projects comprise that gigawatt? About?
I'm going to guess probably in the neighborhood of 100.
So Timmins has been involved in about 100 solar projects similar to this.
That's correct.
There's not that many in the state right now.
That's correct, but there's a lot on the, there's a lot on the books.
There are. I saw that on some of the.
There's a interconnection queue that is operated by the Regional Transmission Agency, PJM. And if one were to review the PJMQ, you could see that there are lots and lots of projects that are being developed.
Another question, maybe you can't answer this, Mr. Thomas, but we have the substation there on Commerce Avenue that the solar facility will be connected to. Is there possibility that other projects nearby would be able to, put or connect with that substation? Or is there a limited number of solar fields that can connect to a single substation?
That's a great question. It's a little bit out of my expertise, but I'll do my best to answer this.
You'll do better than I would.
That, so one of the first things that most developers do is evaluate the interconnection circumstance of the circuit that they're going to tie into. And in, in doing so, they engage in what's, what's known as a study with the, the transmission provider. And during that study, it's evaluated that, that particular substation's capacity to take in new generation and evaluate what upgrades may or may not be needed to accommodate that additional transmission. And so in this study, oftentimes the results of the study are that there are needed upgrades to substations to be able to accommodate either that project or there may not be upgrades needed. There may be available capacity within the substation. So the answer to your question is it's really substation dependent and the load that's flowing to that particular substation. And that's all part of the interconnection evaluation process. So I don't know this particular substation's capacity. My sense is that it's, and perhaps this, this Daniel may know this more than me, but the study has revealed that there is capacity and it's minimal upgrades required. And I had to guess there's probably not a great deal more capacity to allow for many more solar facilities or generation facilities to tie into that particular substation.
Further questions?
Have questions? I'm sorry, I have a lot of questions. Yeah. What is, has been the worst case scenario in construction or post-construction with solar fields that you have been involved with? And how have you dealt with those?
I'd say the worst case scenario is a project that's kind of in the very early stages of the construction and a torrential downpour occurs before the infrastructure is in place to be able to handle that runoff volume prior to all of the facilities being properly constructed and the diversions and so on. So that, that's in my experience, a kind of a, a, a bad storm event at a bad time during the construction process.
And that just postpones construction? You just have to wait till?
It oftentimes requires remediation for sediment discharge that has flown off of the site.
Right.
Some along those lines.
Right. Thank you. That's very helpful. Just to follow up, that kind, it kind of leads into my, one of my greatest concerns was the wastewater management plan that you all have put together. And I imagine as the engineer, that might be what you're involved in.
So minor technical clarification.
Yeah.
I presume you, there's no wastewater that's generated, stormwater.
Stormwater, thank you. I misspoke. Thank you, sir. Yeah.
So, and, and another sort of technical clarification. Stormwater management is generally referred to as a post-construction. You've built your facility, you've got all of the stormwater infrastructure in place to, you know, treat that runoff. And usually these are conveyances, ditches, berms, and stormwater basins. And those, those treat the post-development runoff, basically. The greatest concern or the impactful time is actually the construction process and getting the area stabilized and grass growing and the conveyances adequately built and stabilized. And it's really that period that is, now we say the, the concern period, the post-development, there's no real, in, in our experience, real problem with after the ground has been stabilized and all of the facilities are functioning properly. So I, I will say, and there are very stringent regulations, both state and local, to address all of these matters. And most of the time, you only hear of, of a project that has had a problem. You never hear of all the projects that don't have any problems. So which is the vast majority of them do not have problems. But every now and again, one will make the news or the headlines for a problem during construction.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas.
One of the questions we got today, have we gotten a stormwater engineer to design the stormwater layout, actually run the calculations and using the official wetlands delineations? Have we figured it out?
No, sir. That is a, a, a future stage development activity that, that will be undertaken during the process of design and development of the site. So.
Do you foresee any problems with that?
There, the challenge will be to design the site and make, the, the site will not work unless it's compliant with laws and regulations that are reviewed by both the city and state. So I don't foresee any challenge or any problems. The, the design will have to figure out those challenges and, and employ them to the satisfaction of the regulatory review agencies that have a very thick book to go by.
Another question that came in with the one that Mayor Claffey just asked was, and I'm just going to read it to you. I think you somewhat answered it, but has the developer gotten a field delineation made of wetlands on the site? And have they received the judicial determination from the Army Corps of Engineers?
So as, as Lori mentioned at the beginning, there has been a change in the site plan information that, that went from when we first submitted the application. We only utilize what, what's known as desktop review of where wetlands and streams were suspected to be. Since then, we have performed a wetland delineation and updated the site plan with that information. And we have requested the Corps of Engineers to approve that jurisdictional determination. And that's in the process. But the, the site plan that's currently before you does reflect the actual field delineation of wetlands and streams.
Thank you. Any further questions? Should we get into the public hearing portion?
Hey, Steve?
Yes, sir.
Can I ask one question? How many projects like this one from OICOS are currently in the process or have been completed in the state of Virginia?
I don't know that answer. I'm, I'm not trying to play dumb. I just do not know that answer.
Okay. Is OICOS, does it have any other projects currently in process like this one?
I'm sorry, I didn't.
Does OICOS have any?
No, 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 sir.
No, okay.
Mark, I did read somewhere that in 2010, there were two solar projects in the entire state. And now, and now there are 52 this year. So it is a rapidly growing field without a doubt. And I think that one thing needs to be mentioned about this as far as getting a special use permit versus legislating ordinances for how it should be done. Since the field is so rapidly growing, it's to our advantage to go case by case, individual scenario by individual scenario, and not have a delineated law that is made in 2023 that very well could be a mute point in 2028. We would be better served in 2028 to go through the special use permit again. So therefore, we're not interested in, in establishing a legislative mandate that you have to do this, this, and this, because who's to say that that's going to be appropriate? five years down the line when we're going to be able to revisit this? So maybe, you know, some of the people were saying we need to legislate this first. And, and I, I think the special use permit is the better way to go under the circumstances. But there's a lot of people out here in the audience that want to speak on this matter. And I really think we got to get to this public hearing portion of this. So.
Thank you, Mayor Claffey and City Councilors. If you have any more questions after you hear from the public, please do let us know.
We will. Thank you. So I'm about to open up the public hearing. It's a council, time for council to hear from citizens. Please give your name, your address, keep your remarks at five minutes or less. When you reach the five minute time limit, I will let you know that your time has expired. For our Zoom participants, please get, raise your hand now. So I'm about to wrap the thing and please pay attention to what everybody's asking. And let's not go and ask the same question time and time again. And everybody has an opinion. We understand that. But let's, uh, let's try to make this as informative as possible. With that, I open the public hearing. Like to speak. You have anybody on?
No, sir.
Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Wilson Faber. I reside at 318 Woodmont Drive in Stanton. So, good evening.
Good evening.
Counsel, uh, it's a pleasure to stand here before you this evening. And thank you for your attention to this matter. I want to clarify that I am a candidate for Stanton City Council for the November 7th election. And my remarks, um, center around that. So I'm speaking as a candidate, not just as a citizen with an opinion. I was born in Stanton. I've lived in the city of Stanton for 60 plus years. I've seen some changes and, um, I've seen our area remained in many areas that are so beautiful. And I've worked with so many people in my business that tell me that they moved here because it's so beautiful. And my concern this evening, rather than getting into the technical aspects of it that can be for someone else, is to talk about the beauty of the area and preserving the beauty of our area, uh, especially in such close proximity to downtown Stanton and on the major corridor, um, for Commerce Road. So I, I am not in favor of the project. Most of you already know that. I'm strongly opposed to it. I, I would hope that the project would not be approved. There are so many citizens that I am talking to. When I ask them, what do you think about the solar, solar project? They know nothing about it. But when I begin to explain where it's loc, it's proposed for the location, they're very, very concerned and say, why would they put that there? Why, why do we have to have that in the city of Stanton? And my answer is, I don't know why we have to have that in the city of Stanton. I don't think that it should be in the city of Stanton. I think that Augusta County, I know that Augusta County has already been through this and they denied it and they have a lot more land than we do. I remember when the city and Augusta County went through the process of annexation, that we needed the land. We know that we need land for housing. We need land for businesses. And I am pro-business. That's what much of my campaign is about, is being pro-business. But there are some businesses that are not suited for the city. And I think that this is one of them. I'm not against solar. I think that there are places for solar. But I don't think it's off of Commerce Road, near Lewis Creek or visible from U-Hope Road. So I don't think it's appropriate for our city and this location. I don't understand what the rush is. It seems like it's the project's really being rushed. And certainly there are a lot of unanswered questions, as we've seen already this evening, that there are a lot of questions that need to be answered. I think that there are other people who are not even aware of this meeting tonight, for whatever reason, that would have additional questions as well. So I'm concerned about the beauty of the area, the close proximity to downtown Stanton. If there was a problem, uh, at the facility, I am concerned about if our tourists, they come down Stanton, Stanton Boulevard and they say, what is, where, where does this road go? Well, it goes past a solar farm and it's so close, so close to downtown Stanton. I don't want to see that. I love my city. And I think all of you are here and you ran for city council because you love the city as well. So we share that in common. And I believe that every person that has moved to the city of Stanton, moved here because they love what they see. And I want our residents to be able to, 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 excuse me, to continue being able to see this beautiful farmland. When John Lewis came to this area and settled in the homestead, stayed there, he looked out and this is what he saw. I don't, I drive by this area on U-Hope Road almost daily. And I don't want to look over and see the solar panels. I don't want to see that. I want to see the beauty of the area maintained. Thank you for your attention.
I'm Annie Dixon. I live at 610 New Hope Road in Stanton and have done so since the year 2000. And I thank you for the opportunity to discuss what is tentatively coming right down the street from me. You're considering three requests in one night from out of town developers and investors. And all three items hinge on your vote regarding removal of the Ag Forestals overlay zoning. And this is an optional program in which landowners relinquish their development rights for a period of 10 years at a time in exchange for a lower tax rate from the city and protection for encroaching growth from both the city and fellow members of the opt-in program. This overlay zoning is designed exactly to slow development so that these landowners, their neighbors and the city planners have time to discern the appropriate type, scale and pace of development. And the current term is set for review and renewal in 2030. The zoning code of Stanton, uh, says that these districts are overlay districts and upon termination of any of the districts or withdrawal from any parcel from a district when permitted, the underlying zoning with its rules and regulations shall continue to be in effect. It also says no land within a district shall be removed from the district except with approval, approval of the Council of the City of Stanton upon showing a good and reasonable cause. In preparation for your consideration and vote, the matter was first brought to the city's Agricultural Forestal Advisory Committee. Their report on pages 80 to 82 of the agenda package for tonight's council meeting has a few issues. It notes the perception that the committee did not have enough time to consider the decision properly. And it states the number of votes in favor and opposed, but not the names who cast those votes. And the report is signed but not dated. Meeting agendas and minutes for the February meetings referenced are not available on the city website. And in fact, there are no entries for this advisory board's meeting in 2023 or 2022 posted. The boards and commissions' spreadsheets on the city website shows three open positions on this advisory board. And while the boards and commissions' openings and descriptions page does not note any openings on this committee, but does post openings for others, it defines the membership of the Ag Advisory Committee as 10 members appointed by city council. So the city council has not appointed enough members and is not actively seeking applicants. Once an agricultural forestal district is established, the Code of Virginia requires that the governing body, the local governing body shall establish an advisory committee which shall consist of four landowners who are engaged in agricultural or forestal production, four other landowners of the locality, the commissioner, commissioner of revenue or the local government's chief property assessment officer and a member of the local governing body. The members of the committee shall be appointed by and serve at the pleasure of the local governing body. So again, the local governing body seems to have failed to appoint the correct number of members and to ensure that at least four of them are landowners engaged in agriculture. So I feel we are lacking transparency from the beginning of this process and the makeup of the forestal board itself was not and is not in compliance. According to city and state code, this board did not have the authority to review the request without the proper number and qualifications for residency and agricultural work of board members. This is Stanton's first venture into big solar as well as the developers. If it begins with removal of parcels from the Ag District based on this work of the very advisory committee that is supposed to look out for the members' interests and the appropriate development of our small town, the project and the process will be distrusted and challenged from here on out. I urge you to take the time to review this project with transparency, code compliance and community input and to rescind the zoning vote and to delay the vote on these other two matters. And I thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Good evening, counsel and members. And to our audience, my name is Roseanne Bruckman. I live at 1743 Inglewood Drive in Stanton. And I'm going to read very, very fast because I have a long speech and I have a relay buddy if I run out of time so that you will get the entire thing. I spent a lot of time on this, um, writing this for your, for your benefit. Let me begin by emphasizing I am not opposed to the use of solar energy. I am, however, opposed to the installation of a proposed facility anywhere within the city limits of Stanton. In particular, I'm opposed to the undue speed with which this critical and potentially hazardous decision is being made. What, may I ask, is the hurry? And whose interests are being served by rushing this decision? Clearly not the residents of Stanton. This installation will have potentially dire consequences for Stanton for at least the next 20, uh, 30 to 40 years, possibly longer since ongoing research shows implementing utility scale ground mounted solar facilities can permanently transmute the land, contaminating it and making it unsuitable for other purpose after it is discommissioned, decommissioned and abandoned. More specifically, in addition to the potential negative impact on retention and flow of stormwater and higher velocity sheet flow, large scale grading and topsoil removal, ground compaction and deep turning of soils can have an irreversible impact on the land used by the facility. According to my research, more than 50 solar installations currently exist in Virginia. Regulatory considerations including impact to agriculture, which typically dictates that solar facilities be sited on undeveloped, open, forested or agricultural lands, including for instance, in one case, an abandoned mine. I have not yet been able to ascertain that any of the 50 solar operations within the, are cited within the confines of a city, nor in proximity to residential areas in a thriving downtown, especially not within the close confines of a city like Stanton, best known for its historic charm. In addition, solar facilities are generally sited in areas with little or no development potential for residential, industrial, commercial or other use. Potential negative impacts of the facilities include roadway conditions, traffic safety, reduction of wildlife mobility, alteration of the topography, tree removal, and one of the biggest and most chronic concerns, erosion, sedimentation and stormwater runoff. Solar panels create a semi impermeable cover which increases rainfall velocity, producing drip lines resulting in serious soil compaction with a consistency similar to concrete. These facilities also disturb the ecosystem for pollinators and other insects as well as mammals, wildlife and bird species like those in abundance in the vicinity of the proposed project. What about toxic runoff and, and/or flooding in Lewis Creek? Additionally, what about the serious negative visual impacts with a, with a massive unsightly glass panel installation detracting from the rural character of an area and comprising, compromising scenic views for city residents and visitors? Perhaps most significantly, potential contamination from solar panels can include toxic chemicals like lead, cadmium, arsenic, copper, selenium and hexavalent chromium, the latter incidentally being the chemical exposure at the heart of the moody, uh, movie Aaron Brockovich. Based on ongoing research by Dr. Lee Daniels of Virginia Tech and others, disturbances caused by solar installations may irrevocably degrade soils. The mitigation or remediation can take significant effort spanning years. Further, decommissioning, which must follow our CRA regulations for the hazardous removal of toxic materials can cost millions of dollars, potentially exposing the city of Stanton to huge unplanned future costs. Battery storage, which has at least temporarily, I, I emphasize temporarily, been removed from the proposed project creates unique safety and fire suppression needs beyond the resources and current training, excuse me, training of Stanton Fire and EMS personnel. The council also needs to consider the hidden costs of providing the necessary administrative oversight and training that will result from permitting the proposed site. And what about the value to the city of Stanton? I give up my time to my relay buddy. Thank you.
Relay buddy, Fonda Gardner, 318 Baldwin Drive. According to her recent report created for nearby Albemarle County, regulatory best practices for solar facilities should include defining the use based on size of the project by acreage and/or electrical capacity in megawatts, determining zoning based on how use is defined, establishing procedures and minimum application content, establishing siting agreements pursuant to Code of Virginia. I won't read all those numbers, considering assessing revenue sharing pursuant, again, to the Code of Virginia, addressing phasing timelines, staging and storage, transportation routes and overall mitigation of construction impacts on the public and infrastructure. Decommissioning is part of city ordinance, including overnight site storage, periodic review and evaluation, financial surety, uh, requirements. Establishing minimum development standards for designing and citing, addressing the minimum of, um, and maximum areas of facilities or, uh, related, uh, rated capacity, sorry. I think a lot of these were probably, uh, already, uh, spoken about. So I'll skip over to at least a dozen questions must be asked and answered before any vote is taken on the proposed solar facility. Specifically, what zoning districts should solar facilities be allowed in or prohibited in? Should community solar be defined and regulated differently from utility scale solar facilities? Should there be a maximum area of individual projects? Should there be a maximum combined area for all utility scale solar projects? What setbacks and/or buffer dimensions are appropriate? Appropriate? Should there be different setbacks and buffer from residences or abutting lots with residences? What about from property lines along certain roads and streets? Should there be requirements for minimum distances of facilities from one another? Should there be a buffer around or setback from municipal or development area boundaries where solar facilities are not permitted? Should there be minimum required distances from historical sites, natural resources or agricultural and forestal, uh, districts? Are there historical site or natural resources that warrant more or specific protections? Should facilities be required to be within a certain distance of transmission lines? Should there be regulations limiting significant impacts to existing, uh, forested lands? And should there be regulations that prohibit development of solar facilities on land with prime agricultural soils, lands that have recently been utilized for agricultural production or lands historically used for pine and timber reduction? Are there project elements that should be incentivized or sub-preference established? To reiterate and emphasize, we are not opposed to solar. We are, however, opposed to any approval of the proposed installation without due consideration and due diligence on the part of Stanton City Council. In this regard, I would recommend, uh, along with Roseanne, to request as a minimum that council visit one or more established solar facilities. council visit one or more established solar facilities in Virginia, consult with soil and solar experts like Dr. Lee Daniels of Virginia Tech, and actively engage with Stanton residents, which I think Mr. Faber addressed, especially those neighbors most directly impacted by this installation. I also, which is not on this paper, am concerned about the effect of the solar panels in regard to some type of environmental thing, like when you live under those high-power electric lines. I think we need to see if there's any correlation there. But the main thing is, is let's just slow down. Like Mr. Faber also said, a lot of area residents have no idea this is going on, and there's no reason for us to rush through this and maybe make an improper decision that could be made in months or a year.
Yvonne Wilson, 2017 First Street. I was going to read a letter, but practically everyone else before me has said practically the same thing. And of course, Mayor Claffey has asked that we don't repeat ourselves, so I want to direct this to you. We are not against solar. We do want to move forward. But first, impressions are important. And the first impression that we have gotten as citizens is that there is this company who has come from northern Virginia out of nowhere. We don't know who you are. We don't know what kind of experience you've had. We don't know how many projects that you have been on that have been successful. There has been no transparency for meeting minutes from the planning commission. There has been no transparency of the meeting minutes and the goals of the Agro- Forestral Commission. And now, all of a sudden, in the span of six months, at least six months, now we're here, making a decision on 92 acres of land near a historic site and a water source. That means a lot to the citizens of Stanton. The first impression that we've gotten is that you want to rush this. And though I understand the excitement of new industries for alternative energy, I also understand due diligence. And on your end, it was not followed. And what I mean by that is letting us understand every step of this process, how things are What is that?
That means get out of the building.
Somebody's phone.
I think that means.
I think it's a fire.
I'm a teacher. We have fire drills. We have bomb scares. We get up and we leave the building when this happens.
Do I have permission to give back my time due to this?
Hold on, we're trying to figure what's happening.
Where's the police officer? I understand it, I'm just asking.
Hold on.
Mayor Claffey, I'd call a recess right now.
Let's call a recess.
It was someone's phone. We didn't know whose it was.
Yeah, they didn't sound loud enough for really.
Everyone could please check their phones for silent mode.
Go ahead, Yvonne, whenever you're ready.
Okay. I do apologize. So as I was saying, we want to know every step of this process. This is a big deal. Solar is a big deal. A solar farm is a big deal. And when we don't have answers, when we don't have understanding about how things are built, if we don't understand the process of how these things are approved, if we don't understand what contingencies are in place, because you can stand up there and say, yes, this won't happen because of this and this and this and this. Well, if that's the case, why weren't we told this before? There's a lot of people in this room that have been blindsided by this. I've spoken to three Stanton residents that had no idea that this was going on. So I don't want you to think that we are against solar or alternative energy. I don't want you to think that the city of Stanton is a city that is trying to go backward. We want to make sure that when we are taking on such a project as this, that it doesn't cost us money, it doesn't cost us our environmental quality, it doesn't cost jobs or taxes, or have an impact that would be negative years down the line. Because whatever decision that is going to be made on this project, it will affect our children. And when we are being blindsided by things that we don't understand, or things that are not explained, or things that are not catalogued so that our citizens can make an informed decision and support such a project, well, we tend to get cold feet. So I want to ask city council to delay this decision. Do not vote on this permit now because we still have questions. We still need charts. We want to understand what is going on and being built in our city. Solar is awesome. I'm not against it. But the first impression is you're rushing. And it's trying to blow past citizens' opinions and understanding of it. That's all I have to say.
Thank you for letting me speak. I'm Carol Blackburn. I have lived at 738 New Hope Road for 55 years. Please bear with me, I'm not a public speaker, and I don't do things like this, but I feel it's important. Our family home was part of what was annexed into Stanton in 1986. The county gave the city what was best for the county. I feel the city jumped into the annexation too fast and could have done much more for the citizens of Stanton if research had been done at a better deal, such as the mall and surrounding areas and other parts of Stanton would have been more for benefit to the Stanton, not a bunch of foreign land. It is my understanding Stanton cannot exit any more land, so they need to use what they have very wisely. This is new technology. The company was only incorporated in 2021, and they've never done a solar project like this, and neither has Stanton. So we're a bunch of guinea pigs. Where they want to put it is on a hill. And my understanding is you get better success on level ground. What is going to happen to the land, the soil, the streams, the water, our health? This is new technology. Why are they coming to the beautiful Shenandoah Valley, which is one of the prettiest parts of the state of Virginia, and running our pretty city? If you go out and you look at this area, and you look from where I look at my front yard, it is absolutely one of the most beautiful places I've ever seen. The profit is not going to be here, it's going to be somewhere else. And it doesn't seem like that Stanton residents are going to get a whole lot of benefit from it. Dominion has 16 states and 7 million customers, and Stanton's not going to get much of it. What happens is the company goes bankrupt. I have a neighbor who bought one solar panel, and his company went bankrupt. Who's going to pay for removing all of this? I feel we're jumping too fast, headfirst. There are lots of more things we need to know, and it doesn't hurt to delay. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Blackburn.
I'm Lisa Hatter, 1782 Shutterly Mill Road, and I must say, I'm very proud of my mother. I'd like to echo the comments of the people who have spoken, as well as Wilson Faber, those who believe we are going too quickly. So we had a nice, professional, slick presentation with PowerPoint slides from an out-of-town group. So now you're going to hear from the hearts of your constituents, the ones that you represent. So I'm asking this council to delay this vote. Council needs more information. This is utility-scale solar. It's new to Stanton. It's new to this company. There's not enough time for proper community input. We've not conducted adequate due diligence about the project or the developer. The typical time, I've talked with several experts in this field, people who do solar, they say the typical time for approval of utility-scale solar is three to five years. We are going downhill like an out-of-control train. Moving forward with a vote this evening would be irresponsible and reckless of this council. Today, I spoke with Dr. Lee Daniels from Virginia Tech. He is the subject matter expert in Virginia for solar impact on soil and stormwater runoff. He is helping to craft regulations and permitting standards regarding utility-scale solar projects for the Virginia Department of Environmental Quality, especially on the implementation of House Bill 206, named Getting Solar Siting Right Bill, which passed last year with bipartisan support. Dr. Daniels is working better to protect water, wildlife, historic resources, agricultural soils, and forest lands. And may I inform you that cattle grazing is indeed agriculture. So a return to pre-existing conditions is what we're being told, but that is not accurate according to Dr. Lee Daniels, and Roseanne mentioned some of that, and that is from his work. It's important to note that Albemarle County has cited Dr. Daniels' work, and they're using his expertise in crafting the regulations and best practices. They are using data, they are using science, rather than proceeding with a current proposal, like we are, with information only coming from a solar farm developer. I believe we should wait until the implementation of the new regulations from House Bill 206 before allowing any utility-solar-scale project to be approved in the city of Stanton. Dr. Daniels said he is willing to talk with us. He will come and answer any questions that any of the citizens or the council has. He will tell you his expert knowledge. Now, he does not comment on specific proposals, it's just not his thing, but he will answer any questions that we have. I feel a little bit like citizens are being dissed in favor of an out-of-town developer. My grandmother, if she were here, would look at how quickly we're moving forward, and she would ask, do we know what we're signing up for? Are we getting a pig and a poke? And if you don't know what that means, please Google it. We have impact to wildlife. There's a unique bird habitat that is well-known in the Bell's Lane Agricultural District. We have deer population that need access to Lewis Creek, and there's a fence planned around this project. There are smaller wildlife habitats. What impacts to site temperature, toxic chemicals, leaching? What about broken or damaged panels containing toxic chemicals? This is right next to an existing floodplain. These panels will shed runoff water similar to a hard surface. Think downhill parking lot runoff. How will this affect the new YMCA sports facility being built in the neighboring fields across the creek? And how will this impact flooding on local area roads or neighboring farms? I'm almost out of time, but I will continue this. I think we get a second time to talk about this, or I'll talk about it in Matters from the Public. But I do want to say, we need to slow down. What's the hurry? Thank you for your attention.
My name is Tony Smith. I live in 219 Church Street, and I'm speaking as a resident of Stanton who cares very much about the city. I actually graduated from Stanton Military Academy in '67, and swore I'd never come back to Stanton after that experience. But my wife and I chose to come back in 2006. We fell in love with the city of Stanton and with the Shakespeare Center, and I offered to serve as managing director of the American Shakespeare Center in 2006 and helped turn around the finances of the center so that instead of losing $500,000 a year by the time I left, a year and a half later, was making $500,000 in the black. So I dedicated myself to turning around a major institution that serves the city. Shortly after that, I left the Shakespeare to develop the Stanton Creative Community Fund in 2008 to help provide small loans for startup businesses that pursued a sustainable business plan. And I'm pleased to affirm that the Stanton Creative Community Fund is a viable enterprise serving not only Stanton but the larger region. In 2010, I redirected my energies to solar, and I developed one of the two projects you mentioned, Mr. Mayor, on the rooftop of the Library of Eastern Mennonite University, which then was the largest solar array in Virginia. And as part of that, we upgraded net metering policy with the city of Harrisonburg so that all residents who chose to go solar could benefit from net metering, which is a way in which you can help sustain your solar array by getting credit for the energy you're producing but not able to use at the moment. In 2017, we developed a project at Coralian New River Medical Center. By the way, our purpose in the Secure Solar Futures Company, which was the company that developed this, is to develop solar projects for public school districts, hospitals, universities, commercial entities, and so forth. We currently have 20 megawatts of solar under management and ownership. In 2017, one of the projects we developed was with Coralian New River Medical Center, the first tracker solar array for a hospital, and the first solar sheep project for a hospital. It's currently managed, the vegetation management is with sheep. And part of the reason that project was so strongly supported by the county was the agricultural use of that land. I was pleased to learn from the Timmons Group, by the way, I know Rick Thomas from years back, he and I both serve on the Virginia Renewable Energy Alliance, and Rick didn't know I was going to come here and is probably afraid I'm going to assassinate his character, but no, Rick, don't worry. The Timmons Group is a highly recognized engineering firm in Virginia and operate with the highest business ethics, so I will vouch for their So I will vouch for their team. What I read in their plan is that they have a pollinator plant for the project. And I bring that up because pollinator, a pollinator plant means that it's friendly to birds and bees and therefore to humans. So perhaps that plan hasn't been sufficiently communicated to the public because that could be a very, not only bird-friendly, bee-friendly, but people-friendly plan. You can't have a pollinator plant and spraying a lot of pesticides, and they're not compatible. So I would, I'm speaking in support of this project. I think Stanton could benefit. It would be a branding opportunity for Stanton to be viewed as a progressive city that welcomes renewable energy. And I speak from the heart as someone who has dedicated my life while in Stanton to support a high quality of life in Stanton. Thank you.
Hello, Mayor. Welcome.
Members, you probably remember me, Ron Dixon and the other half of your wife, San Island. Don't underestimate the power of a well-read woman. This is a very sophisticated activity you're going through. And I've grown up with a KISS system, keep it simple. And the first thing I should say, this is an awful lot of activity to take away a beautiful knoll that is the point of that valley. It's one or two individual beautiful little places. Doesn't have, but that knoll, if you look at it, has been developed eons. It's there. It's part of the beauty. It's like the accident, pardon me. So I was amazed, and feeling more amazed tonight, to think of all this effort, all this technology, just to cover that little knoll. And what's it gonna look like? Of course, it's gonna look like hell. There's no question about it. It's not pretty material. And it will deteriorate, as we know, you've heard it all. And I'm speaking, I'm an artist, I'm a studio owner. We came about twenty years ago, we had about nine conventions here, filled the hotels. And we told them to come to Stanton, it's beautiful. And you have, and this is what you build Shakespeare, you've been in the Isaac Group here. There's all sorts of wonderful activities going on in the art field, you know? And yet, the first thing that should have been done was to find a spot that wasn't gonna be destroyed. And the other thing I'm gonna say, just to finish, these are wonderful people that put on a very professional show here, presentation. Had we knew them a little bit earlier, by God, we could have put a good presentation on. Maybe better, because that's what I do in my life. We present for some million-dollar projects to people or charities. So it's a hell of a sales job. So that was this main surprise, and the people sitting there, they really don't deserve that kind of misleading. And that's what seals people do a lot of this. We've been misled a little bit. And I just, I'm not obviously not supportive because we're on New Hope Road, that lonely valley. It's historical, as everybody's noticed, said. It's, people drive through there, they're commenting on it. So I'm not in favor of going through all this just to cover that little knoll. So thanks for letting me say so. But I'm not in favor of it at all.
Mr. Mayor, City Council members, please excuse me, first trip here. So I'm not a public speaker, so I'll do the best I can. My wife and I, my name is John Cordell. My wife's name is Ginger. We live at seven nine four Blue Ridge Drive in Braybridge subdivision. We are obviously opposed to granting this variance or change for this facility or project. Part of my career was working with utilities, not solar, fossil, which I know somebody knew, but they were part of the corporation I worked for. Anyway, none of these were located in a city. All were in rural areas. Now, the city may have built out and eventually caught up where the plant was, but when they were first installed, Carolina Paranlight, Duke, you name all of them, they were in rural areas. This should be in a rural area, not in a city of Stanton. I spoke with one of our former mayors. The term that this mayor used was, this is an abomination. And I pretty well agreed with that assessment of it. We're not opposed to solar. We think that is the future. However, it's not the future of Stanton, Virginia. When I came back here after being gone from Virginia, where I'm a native Virginian, my wife is too. We were gone twenty years, and that's because we had jobs that took us elsewhere. We came back here, I thought I'd come back to God's country. This valley, I traveled up there, it's beautiful. Not only Stanton, but the whole valley. It is a gorgeous place. People want to come here to live because it is green, it is clean. So let's not put a blight on this city with this solar farm, whatever you want to refer to it as. Again, what's the rush? This, I'd only found out about this in March. That's one thing I've heard from the people I've talked to and discussed this with. They say, "What? What are you talking about?" The message did not get out to the city of Stanton that this was being proposed or this project was in the making. The driving force against ending this, I was involved in many projects with the corporation I worked for. The driving force is, what's the ROI? That's the project here. This is the reason I would assume there's a rush here. What's the ROI? There must be one hell of a ROI on this project to push it like this. And then, of course, obviously, if we delay it, you're costing OICOS or the company or whoever who's directing this money. And that's, where's the money, as they say? What is the problem with doing the study? What is the backup? Put it in reverse for a little bit. Let's wait. This is too soon. Again, I'll cut off right here. We do not need this in a city of Stanton. It needs to be placed in some rural area that can entertain this type of facility, but not Stanton, no, please. This valley is beautiful, let's not scar it. Thank you. I have here a petition. It's signed, as many as we could get in a short time we had opposing this installation. Will we give this to the clerk of court? Please.
I'll pass it to him.
Thanks, sir.
These are all citizens of Stanton.
Thank you, Mr. Cordell.
Eric Curran, fourteen South Washington Street in Stanton. Mayor Claffey, Vice Mayor Darby, members of City Council, it's a pleasure to speak before you tonight in support of this solar project, which I'm so glad to hear that everyone in this audience so far supports solar energy. This is a good project for people who support solar energy. And I believe I speak with some experience in this area. I've worked in the solar power industry for more than ten years. And my company, I'm not speaking on behalf of my company, but my company has installed solar panels on some of the most important places in our society, on top of K through twelve public schools. We've installed solar panels on top of schools in Augusta County, in Albemarle County, in Rockbridge County. We're working with several other counties in the state, including Prince William County. If there was any question about the safety of solar panels, K through twelve schools would not be so eager to install them on their property. Solar panels are not a new technology. The first primitive solar panel was actually installed on a rooftop in New York City in eighteen eighty-three. Eighteen eighty-three. Ever since then, solar panels have made some progress. That first solar panel was only about one or two percent efficient. Today, solar panels are between fifteen and twenty percent efficient. But this is a tested, safe technology. The gentleman talked about how fossil fuel plants used to be installed outside of cities, and there's a good reason for that. Fossil fuel plants are dirty and noisy. When Thomas Edison installed his first coal plant in New York City, people complained. They didn't want a coal plant living next, right next to where they live. Solar panels are entirely different. Solar panels are clean and they're quiet. So they're an excellent complement to an industrial area. Now, it is somewhat unusual to have a utility-scale solar array inside a city. Generally speaking, they are in rural areas. But there's at least one city in Virginia, the city of Chesapeake, that in June of two thousand and twenty-one, Chesapeake City Council approved a utility-scale solar array that could be up to a hundred and eighteen megawatts, which would be something like four or five times larger than this project. This is a small utility-scale project. As far as utility-scale projects go, and there have been more than fifty-five of them in Virginia so far, by the way, Virginia's not the only place doing utility-scale solar. They're doing it in Maryland and North Carolina and New Jersey and New York and California and Nevada and Texas. In fact, they're doing utility-scale solar all across the United States. There are thousands of utility-scale solar arrays across the United States. It is a tried and true technology. But anyway, this one is rather small by utility-scale standards. Most of the ones even in Virginia are probably fifty megawatts or larger. This is a small one. But it's a nice one. It's a nice one for the size of Stanton. It won't take up much of the agricultural forestal districts. And according to U.S. EPA, despite what people may find on the internet, there's a lot of misinformation on the internet. U.S. EPA, a reliable authority, says that it's very practical to turn solar farms back to farmland after the solar panels are decommissioned. So this is a good-sized project for Stanton. It actually preserves this land in sort of farm-ready use, and it will bring some money into the city with, and of course, on City Council, you know, the purpose of the Ag Forestal District was not to have farms permanently inside the city of Stanton. It was to develop this land. And so when you think of the alternatives that Mr. Rhodes read of what could be on this land, facilities that recycle old cars, for example, this is a much more invasive, much more intrusive use of this land. The solar panels are going to be almost a way of preserving the land while giving some revenue to the city. It's a really good compromise. Let me finish, though, by addressing the issue of beauty. I like the beauty of downtown. I like the beauty of farms. I like seeing cows on farms. But I also like seeing solar panels. I think they're beautiful. And I was always taught that beauty is as beauty does. And in an era where our country needs energy independence, we need to fight climate change, we need to provide good jobs, solar panels are beautiful. And Stanton citizens have shown that they support clean energy overwhelmingly. So I congratulate you on an excellent process. You've done such a good job. Vote on this tonight and pass it. Thank you.
How you doing? My name's Evan Thompson. I'm going to read on behalf of my mother and father, six eight five New Hope Road, Stanton, Virginia. Before reading, I think, I want to give thanks to Edwards. I think he met with mom and dad.
Yes, sir, I came to you.
You really appreciate it.
Oh, that's very, they're very kind.
And I do, too. So here we go. Dear Mayor Claffey and fellow City Council members, we, Park and Sandra Thompson, are writing you concerning a special use permit to allow a proposed utility solar project to be built just off Commerce Road in Stanton. We live at six eight five New Hope Road. Our home and farm are located several hundred yards east of the proposed facility. We're located in an Ag Forest overlay district, and underlying zoning of our farm is R1. Stanton's first venture into allowing a large solar facility is being considered under a special use permit, not under the guidance of a well-thought-out ordinance. At the April twentieth Planning Commission hearing, Liz Schriver, one of our nearby neighbors, suggested the city hire a consultant to advise the city of the pros and cons, et cetera, of large solar projects and their impacts on the city and surrounding residents and properties. This would be a great foundation or beginning on which to develop an ordinance for large solar projects. Such an ordinance needs to address the many potential environmental concerns, health concerns. Experts recommend living at least a mile and a half away from solar farms, impact to property values when buffering efforts fail to prevent an unobstructed, unavoidable view, et cetera. Maybe also point out that large electrical lines already cross many properties in this area, thereby adding to the health risk mentioned above to the property owners. During the Planning Commission meeting, several of the commissioners commented on the list of uses that are allowed in the I-1 zoning referencing, referencing the worst of what could be built on the property by, and that their appearance would be worse than looking at the solar project. We totally disagree. Solar projects that we observe firsthand are a hundred percent ugly and overbearing. Who knows? Perhaps we would get the most attractive of the possible I-1 uses, not the worst. We would gladly take our chances. This is clearly a quality of life issue to us. If you haven't had the opportunity to view a large solar project, please do so before you decide on making this an unavoidable part of our daily lives. Pictures do not convey the full impact of the presence en masse. We are not anti-solar. In fact, we have a small set of solar panels close to the home that furnish approximately seventy-five percent of our yearly household needs. Most of the land surrounding the site of the proposed facility is at a higher elevation than the ridge the proposed project will be built upon. In terms of the terrain, the site is similar to being at the bottom of a large bowl with the residents and properties to the west being naturally buffered from viewing, viewing the project site and residents to the east on New Hope Road, having virtually an unobstructed bird's-eye view of the proposed site. It seems logical to us that the surrounding properties, which are at an elevation higher than the proposed project, would have an increased probability of being exposed to the glare off of the solar panels, which are fixed and do not rotate with the sun. Is there software available that could plot the glare paths through the seasons? We seem to be at the mercy of a lot of unknowns, and the glare potential is also an important issue to us. The developer was quick to point out that they plan to use glare-reducing panels, but these only reduce a relatively small amount of the glare, they don't eliminate it. Historic Stanton has a rich history from being known as the Queen City, the origin of the city manager form of government to its famous Main Street, as mentioned by the Smithsonian and various printed materials such as USA Today. The beautiful little hollow where we live is the site of historic Stan's beginnings. Our farm contains the site of John Lewis's home and Fort Lewis. John Lewis is buried in the adjoining property on the hill beside us. In summary, we urge the City Council to avoid rushing into this project without first developing a comprehensive ordinance that addresses all relative issues. Please don't base your decisions solely on what the developer, OICOS, if I said it right, presents. At the Planning Commission, the developer's presentation was nothing but the positives and a few, if any, negatives. But this is not reality. This is why a well-developed ordinance is necessary. Thank you on behalf of Park and Sandra Thompson.
Thank you, Evan.
Good evening, members of City Council. Nancy Sarles, three four one nine Cold Springs Road, Greenville. Thanks for allowing me to speak to you tonight as a neighboring Augusta County citizen who has enjoyed a long relationship with the city on many levels. And tonight, as a representative of the Alliance for the Shenandoah Valley, a nonprofit organization that envisions our region as one sustained by farms and forests, clean streams and rivers, and thriving communities. as one sustained by farms and forests, clean streams and rivers, and thriving communities. I'm here to offer both my personal and support from the Alliance on this proposed project. I did not come by these recommendations without a lot of research, consideration, and thoughtful discussion. While I am absolutely certain that solar is our future for so many reasons, global climate change, improvement of soil and water as a pressure relief valve against the wrong kind of growth or too fast growth, and this might surprise some folks, it is also a way to save agriculture and preserve farmland. I am also, I'm, I am also certain that not all solar projects are equal. Done right, solar projects help support the reasons that I just mentioned. Done wrong, there can be serious problems. But I would like to commend Stanton staff for their hard work that has ensured that this specific project, if approved, will become a model for the following reasons. The erosion and sediment control and stormwater designs are well above the minimum standards. There's a commitment to becoming certified under the rigid standards of Virginia's Pollinator Plant Program. Water resources are nicely protected. There will be no grading of land under panels. There are great buffers, and there's a strong decommissioning plan. Further, given the underlying zoning on this project, a well-designed solar project is far better for the land and the surrounding community than the buy right possibilities that have been mentioned, such as a lumberyard or a freight terminal or tire retreading facility. There's just no comparison between the visual and noise impact of the buy right permitted uses in a nicely buffered, static, noiseless solar array. I also think that this project provides a good synergy with farming. To make the point as I did at your last meeting, I would like to, to quote Kermit the Frog, who said, "It ain't easy being green." I'm not sure that Kermit was really talking about maintaining the vitality of farmland, but that's what I'm talking about. Keeping farmlands going, generation after generation, is not easy. Farming is a business, and businesses have to make money or they don't survive. We have always had agriculture here because farmers have been smart and agile and good businesspeople, finding different ways to diversify their income so they can keep the land open and available for the next generation. Solar arrays create a steady income stream that allows the land to remain undeveloped and simultaneously improves the water and soil. If that is not considered part of farming, then it should be. I am saddened that this piece of property must be pulled from the voluntary Ag Forestal District, but that's a necessity of the language in the state code that was developed long before solar was on the horizon. Moving forward, I would suggest that there needs to be work done by all of us with our Richmond representatives so that the relationship between properly planned solar projects and farming is defined, and land that meets these standards can remain in Ag Forestal District. But, but that's something for us to do another day. As for tonight, I know there is some opposition to this project. I get it. People hate change and the unknown. But what saddens me is the deliberate spreading of false information by some people to community members who don't realize they are victims of that misinformation, such as, "This is not a rezoning. It's a special use permit hearing. The industrial zoning of the land means that something far worse could land and wind up on this land with no public input whatsoever." Solar panels are not toxic. They do not leach chemicals into the soil or water. If they were, why would we, as Eric said, put them on our schools? It's no different than the cell phones we hold up to our ears every day. That's, that's the kind of materials that are in it. Solar panels don't produce glare. They're designed to absorb light, to produce electricity. Otherwise, they wouldn't be at airports. Finally, to those who say there is no local benefit, I would ask this. How much electricity does Stanton or Augusta County right now produce right here? But how much do we use? The electrons of electricity that go into the grid come back to us for our use. Insisting that they must stay local is like saying that Hershey candy bars that are produced in Stewards Draft can only be sold in Augusta County. Or area beef cattle must become steaks and hamburgers only on our dining room tables. Citizens have busy lives and must rely on city planners to take a deep dive into the projects in order to protect and enhance the community. In this case, the citizens hit the jackpot because your planning department worked with the developer to produce a project that is a win-win for all. Finally, I would like to leave you with a thought as elected representatives of our people with the paraphrased words of the 18th century British statesman Edmund Burke, who talked about the importance of you all making the right decisions, even in the face of contrary public opinion that might not have all the facts. Edmund Burke said in the 18th century, "A representative owes the people not only his industry, but his judgment. And he portrays the people instead of serving them if he sacrifices that judgment to their opinion." Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy.
Hi, Brenda Mead, Sherwood Avenue, Stanton. I stand in support of items D and E on the agenda this evening. I believe that staff have worked diligently to overcome objections and issues to this solar project, and I believe their recommendations should be followed when you approve this, this, these two items. This will be our opportunity to stand out as a progressive and strong supporter of diversification of our community energy sources. We can be leaders in the fight against the effects of global warming and climate change. It, in the grand scheme of things, you know, this solar project is not a big project. And, and it won't, it will make slight, a slight dent. But, but, but it still demonstrates that Stanton is a progressive community that believes that we need to address the issues of solar, solar warming. And, and I think it's important that we continue to support solar projects. I hope that future Stanton City or City Schools projects, like the Juvenile Domestic Relations Court, will include meaningful commitments to solar energy. But this project is a good start. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Edward Willen, 629 Churchville Avenue. I agree with the last couple people about solar. I've traveled to Germany probably three times in the last 20 years. And the last time I went, about three years ago. Solar panels are everywhere in Munich area. They're on rooftops. They're on, right along the highway in the little tiny areas where, where you wouldn't think they would put them. They put them everywhere. You don't even notice them. They're actually, like the other gentleman said, they're very sleek. I don't, I don't, I, to me, when I see them, I see the same as that other gentleman. I see beauty. I don't think they're, they're really, will hurt the land state landscapes. We gotta do something positive. Why can't we be a progressive town? I have, so many people are against it. They don't like change, change. I understand that. But I think it's time to go green, and I vote for this ordinance. And I hope you guys do too. Thank you.
I will be very brief. My name is Rachel Epling. I live at 800 Lammamore Drive. I would just like to say very, very briefly that my husband and I fell in love with Stanton and the beauty, yes, like so many people have said. We particularly chose our home because the, the back porch, screened-in porch, is phenomenal. It has a phenomenal view. And we love having guests in and people coming in from out of state. And everybody comes in and says, "Oh, my goodness, this is a beautiful, beautiful view." I would just like to say, we spend many, many hours. I do my morning devotions, have my coffee in the morning on this back porch. We would be in direct line of vision of these solar panels, which right now is just beautiful green. So I don't know about the technicalities. I don't know. You know, I couldn't, I couldn't talk about the, the risks of solar panels or the, you know, pros and cons on that front. I will say that I don't really want it in my backyard. We bought this house, and we really, really like it, and we really like our view. So I would just ask that, that council member, members slow down a little bit and consider delaying a decision tonight. Thank you.
Cindy Connors, 106 A Skyline Avenue. I'll try not to repeat what the other folks have said in support of this project. But as far as the timeliness goes, I have a couple opinions on that. One is that we are so far behind the eight ball here in the Shenandoah Valley. This technology is not new at all, as Eric said. The first, I under, the first commercial solar field in the United States is in the 1980s. The first one in Virginia was in 2010, and we've accelerated since then. I think it's about time we go green. Also, as far as timeliness goes in the speed of this project, WHSV carried a story in February. Public Radio had a story in April. I'm not sure why people didn't get the word, but the word's out there. I don't think this has been rushed at all. It sounds like all the things that need to be considered have been carefully considered. And there are still checks and balances along the way on this project. State law has lots of checks and balances, et cetera. So I believe this project will be done appropriately. It's the first time I've seen one personally in planning stage that's going to have a pollinator buffer. I think that's amazingly awesome. I used to live in Denver, and we love our environment in Denver also, but there are tons of solar fields there. In fact, our airport is completely surrounded by them in Denver. And that's because the FAA has ruled that solar panels reflect very little light, only about 2% of the sunlight, which is less than vegetation, soil, rooftops, glass, snow, or metal, and about on the same level as body of water or some asphalt. So the, the glare issue isn't an issue. We've also talked last month so much about folks that are affected economically right now in this period of time. This can help them with their energy bill. That's a positive thing. Helps the city of Stanton financially. That's a positive thing. And I think Stanton is a perfect place to be a leader in green energy. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Bobby Whites Carver. I live at 164 Whiskey Creek Road in Churchville. And I'm here because I love this city. I was your district conservationist with the Headwaters District for 26 years. I am a soils graduate from Virginia Tech, and I retired from USDA over 10 years ago. Started my own consulting business. I'm a watershed restoration consultant. Now, these, these people didn't hire me. I didn't want them to. But I do consult with units of government, solar companies, and people that want to put solar panels on their land. And I can tell you, this is a good project. They have met every planning criteria from the national planning, whatever groups they are, the Chesapeake Bay Foundation, the Alliance for the Shenandoah Valley. We have criteria. I have a must-have list of things that have to be in a plan for utility scale solar. Screening, buffers, decommissioning. The, the beauty of this plan and, and any plan is that you cannot have more runoff. We, we have a state law that says you can't have more runoff, what, stormwater runoff than the pre-developed condition. And this company and your staff came to an agreement that these solar panels are going to be treated as impervious to rain, which makes them put in a lot larger stormwater retention facilities. So when it comes time to do a site plan and do the engineering that Timmons, you know, the Timmons Group is, is a well-respected engineering firm, they're going to do it right. And your staff is going to make sure they're going to do it right. I was the chairman of the Valley Conservation Council when this city annexed the farmland in Augusta County. And this city immediately rezoned that farmland to various zoning things like commercial and industrial. And I don't think the landowners liked that too much. And the Valley Conservation Council helped broker a deal with the city that, that these farmers could continue receiving a lower tax rate as long as they were farming. But the city took this land. It was a hostile takeover because you needed tax revenue and you wanted to develop it. And this land is zoned industrial, and so by right, it could be a junkyard. It could be a truck terminal. So I am pleased that it's going to be solar panels. It's going to help lift up people that can't pay their electric bill. It's going to be good for people. It's going to be good for Stanton. Stanton led the state. This was, this was the first city to have an Ag and Forestal District in the state. This was the first city to have stormwater utility fees. And I'm hoping it's going to be the first to have a utility scale solar. So I'm in favor of it, and I hope you'll vote that way. Thank you.
John Hartless, 826 Lammamore Drive. And I'm here to agree with most of the folks that have spoke before me, so I'm not going to repeat everything they said. I am opposed to this. And just listening to handclaps reactions and listening to the number of folks that have been up here, it seems that most of the people in the, in the audience here are opposed as well. Might be wise to do a hand count just for your benefit to let you know. How many folks in maybe save some time at the podium for other folks who will be repeating the same thing that I'm not going to do? I live on Lammamore, as my neighbor told you about. My address is about four houses above hers going west. And my home is what was referred to as one of the, one or two on the west side of Commerce Road that would be, where the view and would be affected by this project. When you stand on my deck and you look out, you're looking, you're looking at woods down on the Reed Farm and out on the Moore Farm, properties out there as the property adjacent to the highway, the VDOT and the state police headquarters. So I'm going to look right down on it. I didn't buy that property to have that view. I love the view that's there now. We often sit on that deck and look at it. I think you represent, as you all know, 25,000 people in the city. Whether the voters are not is not the issue. You represent all 25,000. This group of, this body here, the majority, are in oppose, opposition to this. So I'm going to leave you with a question. I hope that when you vote individually tonight on this, that you will express your logic and your rationale for what your vote is for everyone that is opposed to it, as well as the ones here that are in support of it. So I want to ask that of you and ask that you follow that when you vote tonight. Thank you.
You might remember my name. You know, I have this imagination. I've never been out in space, but I understand that people who have been can look down and see the earth. And it's very, very small. And I think that we're quickly on our way to destroying it with fossil fuels. And if we can take from nature, just let the sun give us some power and some of our electricity, I think, I think we can maybe save the earth for a little bit longer. So I'm in favor of this. Thank you.
Good evening, members of council. Adam Campbell, 206 Meadow Brook Road. Tonight, I just wanted to speak a little bit to the process. I'm on the Stanton Planning Commission. We recommended approval at our meeting in April for y'all's consideration tonight. I appreciate everyone that's gotten up and spoken tonight about their concerns, the feeling that this is rushed. I wish you all could have been at the planning commission meeting. I'm always, it's always great to see people in the public come out and speak about things in their community. But I want to assure you that at a staff in their community. But I want to assure you that at a staff level, in a decision-making level, this has not been rushed. I want to commend our city staff. They have done an incredible job with this application. It's been almost a year through the various process that we've been considering this. So I want to commend all staff's hard work on it. The planning commission, my six years I've been on the planning commission, this is by far the application that we've spent the most time on. We've had tons of questions. We've met as a group. We've talked to industry leaders, professionals to get those questions answered, and it's reflected in the application for you tonight with up 20 conditions to make sure that this project is a success. Mayor Claffey, as you said, 100% agree with you that the special use permit is the appropriate tool for this type of application. There's a limited number of areas within our city this type of use can be considered. By keeping in a special use permit, that allows us to be flexible, change with technology, and really look at the site specifics as they're considered. And I just also wanted to say, just I appreciate the applicant. They have given all the information that planning commission has requested. When our review of this, they have been, I've gone above and beyond what would be expected. And I just want to say, from a planning commission standpoint, we felt to a point where we're 100% comfortable with the conditions in place, hence the recommendation from the planning commission before you tonight. Thank you.
Mr. Kestner?
No, sir. We have no one with their hands raised on Zoom.
Last call for public hearing. Public hearing is closed. This point, any further development? At this point, I'm prepared to entertain a motion.
Are we allowed, can we see some comments? I know Ronnie said he'd come back up if we had some questions for him. I just want to say, I don't know how many speakers we had, but it was a good number. I have, you all saw I ran out of paper, so I started writing on a piece of letter, that piece of mail that I got. I have so many notes that I don't know how to address them. I first want to say that I'm sorry that, I want to reiterate what some speaker just said, that I'm really sorry that people feel like the wool has been pulled over their eyes. I agree with Adam that I don't think that staff or council or planning commission or anyone has tried to hide anything from anyone. And I really would invite people to planning commission meetings and to city council meetings and to go to our website, go to our Facebook page, to really, to keep up on what is happening in our city government, so that these things don't come as a surprise. You know, it doesn't surprise me though, because pretty much everyone I meet in Stanton has no idea who I am, that I'm even on city council, and they don't know who anyone on city council is either. So I really invite folks to become more involved in city government. It was brought up also that there are four or five openings on the Ag Forestal Advisory Board. And again, that's, I think, an invitation to everybody in this room to look into the boards and advisory commissions, that we do need people to serve. And you can see why these are important. We need the input of citizens. And, you know, if we'd had that, then maybe we could have had a better decision on that very, very, very first vote. I feel like I have a lot of information in front of me, and it's 10 o'clock, and we have two votes to take. We have three votes to take. I appreciate everyone's request for more time. I would like more time, just because I would like to read through the notes that I took as people were speaking. I have concerns. I have concerns that people are perhaps unjustifiably frightened of the potential hazards of the solar. I feel like our staff and the applicant has addressed those concerns very, very well. I feel like the special use permit has addressed those things, that the applicant knows that there, and the engineering firm knows that there will be permitting processes, regulations, all the way through the process. It's not the Wild West. We vote yes, and the Wild West takes over, and they just go in and start throwing solar panels into the ground. I think this is more of an issue of, the visuals are very important. This is a city that's very proud of its history, very proud of its culture, very proud of its beauty. And I want to respect that. And if folks are feeling like they need more time to hear more information, then I will respect that. And if fellow council members are feeling like they need more time, gather more information about the impacts of solar, or this project in particular, then I respect that as well. So with that in mind, I would move to postpone a vote for, I would throw out a number, an appropriate amount of time to give members of council, members of the community, additional time to communicate, to communicate with other residents, and to get their questions answered. Perhaps appropriate amount of time would be the last meeting in June. That would give us a month.
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Robertson?
I will, I will second that. I, too, have some concerns. I just, I don't know that I may not get there. But I do agree with Counselor Michelle. And I would like to maybe even hear from the expert that was brought up, you know, in the solar field. I'd like to hear from that. You know, just, I think when we take that final vote, we need to be able to say, yes, we did all of our due diligence, that there will be no questions. And if we can do that, and we can then take a vote and come to a yes, or however that may turn out, then at least we can say we've done what we need to do. So I would happily second that motion.
Motion has been made and seconded. Do we have any further discussion?
Just for clarifications, this motion to delay?
That is to delay, I think Michelle said the last meeting in June.
For items D and E?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
That would be for both items.
Yes.
Thank you.
Both D and E?
Yes, yes.
Mr. Blair, is that acceptable?
Certainly, the council can postpone its consideration of these matters for one month if...
My question is, is a public hearing in consideration of the solar siting agreement?
You will have to have another public hearing if you delay it till June 22nd.
Yes. Is that fair? Is that agreeable there, Ryan?
Mark, was that a second?
Yes, that's fine with me.
This is Terry Holmes. I don't think anything is really going to change in a month. And I mean, we've had, we put solar panels on schools and where we live, and they seem like they've done everything that they could to make this a very eco-friendly project. The fact that it's going to be a pollinator, that means there's going to be flower, there can be all kinds of things that grow there that attract bees, birds. I find that very, very attractive to the whole site. And I kind of agree with what Michelle said about, people just don't, they're not informed, and until it's in your backyard, you don't do anything. And it's like these, like not having these ag spots filled on the council, people just don't apply for it, you know? And I don't know what a month's difference is going to make. You know, we'll just get the same arguments in a month. Personally, I'm voting tonight.
Yeah. Terry, I understand, my friend. I know, I understand where you're coming from. But I also know that, God forbid, if something would go wrong, if it would go wrong when we took the vote tonight, if it turned out a yes, something went wrong, then we are going to be, you know, they're going to come at us, why didn't you let us take this extra month, talk to a few more experts, get a few more answers, and then if the answer is yes, so be it.
Well, I tell you, when Nancy got, I was wavering a little bit, but when Nancy got up there, and Nancy Sorrells is like, she's a jewel to this whole community.
And I respect Nancy for that, absolutely.
She does her homework. And I'm known Eric, and Eric is right about what he's saying. I mean, there's, I don't see the downfall. I mean, I would much rather have a solar farm than a junkyard. I mean, you know, and now, we've already taken this out of the Ag District. I don't know that we can rescind that vote, can we? John, can we rescind that vote?
Counselor Holmes, it would take a motion to reconsider at your next meeting, somebody who voted in the majority, which I believe all of you voted in the majority except for Counselor Woods in that. So one of you would have to make a motion to reconsider at your June 8th meeting, or the decision would be final per your rules.
Well, I mean, I really, I believe in this project, and, you know, and I understand y'all's concerns. But I mean, the staff has really done a lot of work on this, and they, they crossed their Ts and dotted their Is. And when you get people up there that's saying that this is, that they've done more than their share to make this a great project. I don't know what kind of information we're going to get in a month that's going to change that. And that's my personal belief, and I'm sorry, and I respect every one of y'all's opinions on this.
Terry, and I respect yours as well, my friend. I do.
Mayor Claffey, council, folks in the audience, I feel like that at this point, I really, I really do think that all the information that was given tonight on both sides of this issue, it was very compelling information. But I do feel like that at this point, I would like to table it. I feel like that there is reason for us to wait, gather, you know, talk to more folks on both sides of the issue, and hear what people have to say before we make this decision.
I, this came up originally while I was still on planning commission last year. And we, I agree with Adam that mentioned that we really have chased these people with all kinds of add-ons to it and requirements for it. And I appreciated Mayor Claffey, your explanation as to why we felt a special use permit was best for this, so we can be most adaptable and flexible for each separate project if we have these again, because we don't just want any kind of by right usage or anything like that going on, because it seems like, excuse me, very specialized project for the city. I also, I agree that it's hard to imagine what will change in a month. I mean, especially from, I think the staff has really done a lot of due diligence on this and has very much answered every question I had with it. And the bulk of my concerns with this project went away as soon as the battery aspect of it was away from the project, and that can't casually come back either on it. So I'm, I don't feel that this involves the city tying OICOS down any further on this, but I think that a lot of residents are expressing, they feel that they only learned about this recently. And we've talked about how it's an issue. Maybe we need to find ways to better communicate what is going on, what is going through planning commission, what is happening within the city across on that. But I think that it's a matter of the residents that are affected, learning more about this type of solar project, because it just feels like there's a lot of confusion as to the many aspects of it. So from staff's perspective, I cannot imagine anything changing on this product, project in a month. But if we feel we want to delay so that the citizenry can learn more about it, that's, to me, a reasonable excuse to do it.
I'd like to weigh in on that very point. I find that most of the information I got was through the agenda packet. And I must admit, I've read the agenda packet to this meeting more than I have most of the other packets. It's been two, three, four times going back through it. And you pick up additional fact, and I really urge everyone in this attendance tonight to take the agenda packet and read it. And there's 157 pages to it. And there's a lot of tremendous information in there. And I think that a lot of the misconceptions and factoids that were thrown out here tonight might be allayed if you were to read the agenda packet. So I think it's time for an education program. I think it's time to take 30 days and think about it, and read and see what we can come up with. And we're going to have to have another public hearing in 30 days on the consideration of the solar siting agreement. So I'm going to call for the motion to be voted upon as, here to reword it one time.
Mayor Claffey, I move to postpone the vote on this evening's items, E and D, D and E, for one month till our June 2nd meeting in June.
And we have a second from Counselor Robertson, correct?
Correct.
Mr. Kestner?
Mr. Arrowood?
Aye.
Ms. Edwards?
Aye.
Ms. Woods?
Aye.
Mr. Robertson?
Aye.
Mr. Holmes?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Darby?
Aye.
Mayor Claffey?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Most interesting night, folks, but it isn't over.
Not over.
We have item F, which was added at the work session. And that is a consideration, and I turn this over to Ms. Beauregard.
Mayor Claffey, would you like to read the item, the item name first?
No, I prefer you to read, because I don't have it.
Okay. What was added as an agenda item this evening was acquisition of property for the City of Stanton Juvenile?
This is a good one. You'll want to stay.
You want to stay, folks. You want to stay.
So tonight, council?
Go ahead, read the new city.
Sorry. Consideration of real estate acquisition for the Stanton Juvenile Domestic Relations Court. And I'm going to kick off this item by, or introduce this item by first providing some background as to how we got to this point. I'll start by reminding everyone that on April 27th, city council directed staff to find an alternative site to the Hardy Lot. And tonight, we're here to inform the public, the city council has identified a new site that we are very excited to share with the community. Following the April 13th city council meeting, when staff shared a lot of information about the J and D R court facility project, many, many suggested locations were made by, were offered by the public to staff and to city council. Staff reviewed with city council every suggestion submitted, and in some cases, staff met with members of the community regarding their ideas. There were dozens of properties explored. Robin Miller also volunteered his services to help the city navigate the process of looking at alternative sites, and staff took him up on that offer and started immediately to work with him. And we want to And we want to extend many thanks to Robin for his help, insight and expertise. He volunteered his time and gave staff and City Council a lot to think about and consider during his time working with us. And for that, we are grateful and look forward to his continued partnerships and contributions to the City of Stanton. Bottom lines, we're grateful to everyone who engaged with us in this process. At that same meeting on April 13th, staff also shared with the public that a certain property was the top choice and that there was a strong interest in the site. But at that time, the site was unavailable and therefore off the table. But is because of this community interest, I just mentioned that a connection was successfully made to begin the necessary steps to be able to announce tonight that the city will acquire Chestnut Hill Shopping Center in the West End as the new loc- I'll stop sweating now. As the new location for the Stanton Juvenile and Domestic Relations District Court. In particular, City Council and staff thanks Weston resident Betty Jordan for her persistence and energy. For her persistence and energy that once again opened up the dialogue between the city and the property owner. She took the init- the initiative by reaching out to Vice Mayor Darby and Councilmember Robertson, that the owner of Chestnut Hills was interested in talking to the city. And we immediately made contact once Ms. Darby and Mr. Robertson reached out to me. I also want to recognize other members of the Weston community who reached out to me about their interest in the city acquiring Chestnut Hills. And now that this acquisition is at hand, we are excited to work with and be an active partner with the Weston Business Association and the entire Weston community as this project moves forward. I would now like to turn it over to Mayor Claffey and the rest of the City Council members who would love to talk about why this is the best site for a J and D R court facility and the other benefits this site offers. Mayor Claffey.
Thank you. The Chestnut Hills location has always been, has always had a strong alignment with council's long-term strategic plan. West End development has always been a goal all by itself. This courthouse move will provide the catalyst to see a west end revitalization of existing businesses and allow development of further business opportunities. This relocation will enhance our city's economic well-being and improve Stanton's quality of life. I am very pleased to have this move.
Mayor Claffey, uh, I would add to that, that the Chestnut Hills site allows this city to provide a legally mandated Juvenile and Domestic Relations District Court for our city. This location provides a flexible path to meeting the three important and complicated requirements of a court facility, and that is circulation, security and accessibility. And this site provides ample square footage, parking, and most importantly, access to public transportation. This will allow us to have an aggressive timeline, and by fall of 2025, the plan is to be in our new Juvenile Domestic Relations Court facility.
Mayor Darby, thank you for that. I'd just like to add that, um, I think it's also an, an important asset for the city because as we grow and as we have been growing, there are always challenges for space. We're outgrowing office space, facility space, and this will allow us to, to grow with the city. So this asset will allow us to meet the future space needs of the city government. I'm excited about that. And I think everyone in this room is.
Yes.
Yeah. And just to add on to what, uh, Mayor Claffey and Leslie had mentioned before, this was truly one of our first choices early on. Uh, and I don't know how many emails we all answered with, yeah, uh, Chestnut Hills sounds great, but it's not for sale. So we were very happy when it came back on the table and we think it's just a, a great option going forward. And there's room for expansion there and, and just a excellent place to start.
So I agree with, you know, all the statements that have been made this far, and I believe that this is, uh, working together for Stanton's future. And we are also fortunate that we are able to acquire this property.
Mayor Claffey?
Counselor Holmes.
The decision to, to locate Chestnut Hills is reflective of community input and it, and it behooves people to, to stay abreast of what's going on in our community. I mean, we all agreed that this was the best place and, and our, our constituent constituents agreed that this was a good choice and, 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 and thank God everybody got involved because it really helped us solve a problem that was looking pretty bleak at times. And, uh, you know, uh, we got a time constraint that we have to have this court, uh, uh, built and, and ready to go. And I hope that we are able to meet that even with this property. But, but I'm, I'm glad that we, we've got the chance to, to vote on this.
Counselor Robertson.
Yeah, I would just like to say first off that I want to, uh, personally thank Betty Jordan uh, for all of her diligence. Uh, she has been actually working for years on trying to get this piece of property, uh, before it was bought just recently, you know, to, to, to make something happen with that property. I want to like personally thank, um, all of the members of the Weston Business Association. And like I told my councilmates, um, that, uh, the night we talked about this, that, you know, this is the opportunity to make something happen with the West End. Everyone sitting up on this dais, Terry and I both, um, you know, when we ran for office, we said we were committed to trying to help the West End. And as I told the rest of City Council, this is our opportunity to make that happen. Not only will this be good for the West End, this will be good for Stanton. And, um, this is exciting days ahead. I really believe that.
I mean, this, this is just so, I'm excited. I mean, because this is, this is just so good to, as a beginning, as everyone had already said, but this just jumpstarts, you know, of having this done out there on the West End that, you know, people are coming back to the West End because you got to come through there now. And then, you know, it might be businesses out there and we're talking about blatant properties and all that stuff, and that'd be so fantastic if we can just, you know, get all of that just taken care of and then the West End will be vibrant again. So we're not taking away from anything else from any other parts of the city. We don't want to say that, but we just want to include all areas of the City of Stanton. So Weston is definitely need revitalization done. And this, this right here, I believe is starting.
Well, time for me to call for a motion.
Oh, wait a minute. Mayor Claffey. Oh. Motion first, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion first, okay.
Counselor Wood.
No, most, oh. Mayor Claffey, I move to direct the city manager to execute a contract approved as to form by the city attorney to acquire the property located at 2040 West Beverly Street, Stanton, Virginia.
Motion has been made. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Robertson.
I will wholeheartedly second that.
Right. Mr. Kestner.
Mr. Arrowood.
Aye.
Ms. Woods.
Aye.
Ms. Edwards.
Aye.
Mr. Robertson.
Aye.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Darby.
Aye.
Mayor Claffey.
Aye.
Motion carries.
It's been a long night, but that's a wonderful relief. But let me turn this over to, uh, Ms. Beauregard. Yes.
Uh, if you don't mind, I'm going to bow out for the rest of the meeting. I'm, I'm, I haven't taken any pain medicine and my knee is killing me. Certain position, but I'm, I'm sorry, guys.
No problem, Terry. Hope you feel better.
And get some rest.
Thank you.
Ms. Beauregard.
Sure. I just have a few more things I'd like to say about, um, this development. Um, to wrap this up, so staff has communicated with the Commonwealth about the new location and the court order will be amended accordingly. The Commonwealth is satisfied with the site. Immediately, we can cancel the RFP that had previously identified the Hardy Lot. And staff will meet with the Commonwealth in the next week to revise the court order. And once that is done, a new RFP will be reissued reflective of the updated schedule and the new location. This has not changed, however, the fact that the city is required to be in our own court facility by fall 2025, which Vice Mayor Darby spoke to earlier, that this site most definitely does give us the flexibility to achieve that goal. We do have a website, which will be updated with information as frequently as possible, and will include after tonight, a press release regarding tonight's announcements. In addition, FAQs that, that highlight many of the information that was provided tonight and a few more, and a little bit more information than that, actually. And that will be posted in the very near future. And finally, the city will begin immediately to partner and engage with the West End and in particular, the Weston Business Association as the project is progressing.
Thank you, ma'am. Anything else?
Do you want me to keep going for my matters?
Yes, ma'am.
I just have two items to share tonight. They have nothing to do with Chestnut Hills. Um, just reminding folks that the recycling center will be closed on Monday, May 29th for Memorial Day in it, as well as City Hall and other city facilities. I also want to remind everyone that the recycling center will be moving from Gypsy Hill Park to the Public Works Yard on Craigmont Road. We've been talking about this for a while, but we're going to start getting more, we're going to start pushing more information out very soon about this. And, uh, the, the pad over there looks great, by the way, at Public Works. The recycling center will be, will close at 1:00 PM on Friday, June 30th and reopen at Public Works at 9:00 AM on Monday, July 3rd. And finally, just one more item. The city topped the list of, quote, eight coolest small towns in Virginia for a summer vacation on World Atlas.
Very good. All right. Thank you very much for all the hard work you and staff have been.
Thank you for your hard work as well.
All right, that brings us to Matters from the Public. This part of City Council's agenda is called Matters from the Public. It is time the council sets aside to hear from citizen, uh, others on a wide variety of topics. Copy of the rules is available. Five minutes to speak. Please introduce yourself. And tonight I ask that we hear no more about solar. We'll hear everything but solar tonight.
Okay, Cindy Connors, 106A Skyline Avenue. I don't think I can beat that awesome news that you just announced, except I do have good news and a big thank you. So, um, I finally got the exact numbers from last year's food drive in Stanton. We collected 7,313 pounds last year in Stanton. This year we collected 8,678.
Wow, good job.
That's up 13, over 1,300 pounds. And that's all thanks to you and a lot of folks who helped advertise and, uh, to Counselor Edwards who helped pick up food. And, uh, Adam Campbell helped pick up food and a whole army of people. And that will, that's enough food to give it in perspective. That's enough food to for a hu- um, a family of four to eat for a hundred days. Is the diff- that's just the difference in the two collections. So well done and thank you.
Thank you.
Well done. Thank you.
Nice.
Anyone else? Going once, going twice? Meeting adjourned. Come on, Betty, get up here. We want to talk to you.
That's sweet.